Welcome to the meeting of May 6th. Can I get roll call, please?
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Bone. Chair Bushnell.
Here.
All are here.
Salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands in one nation, of one government, giving the physical, political, and justice for all.
Modifications to the agenda, please.
Good morning, Chair Bushnell. There are three modifications today. Item D-13, D-16, and D-17 are being pulled for discussion.
I'll move consent minus those items.
No, that's not how we do it.
Alright.
So we're gonna, um, thank you. So the consent items that were pulled today, I'm not sure that they'll come right after in order. We just have a very large agenda today with a lot of time set, so we'll try to get them in when we can. And... No, he didn't finish. So the first item we're gonna go to is Certificate of Recognition for the Seroptimus of Arcata. And Supervisor Madron was in attendance and handed these out.
Yeah, I just wanna commend all the award winners.
Mike, please. Steve, Mike.
Yes, I just want to commend all the award winners. They received their awards last, about two weeks ago, actually, so this is a follow-up to that. And I actually do not have a list in front of me, so I apologize for that.
That's okay. Thank you. And then we have a retirement resolution for Denny King. Is anybody here? For Denny King. So I don't know this person, but Rex did, and I think they worked, go ahead Rex.
Well, I think as Supervisor Wilson would say, anybody that could work 28 years at the county should be recognized and appreciated. And she's been retired for a little bit now, but recognition is highly regarded up here when people can serve the public as long as they have, so we like to recognize them for that.
Yeah, and so she received her resolution already, and congratulations on her retirement. And then we're gonna go to number six, who has come, coming to us from Supervisor Arroyo.
Just one moment. So I know we have some folks here to accept the Bike Month proclamation for May. Please go ahead and come on up. And if the rest of the group wants to come up too, then we can take a picture right after I read it, and then we'll have Olivera make some comments. I'm sorry, Calvin.
All good?
Thinking of a different one.
Hey, good morning, guys. My name's Calvin, I'm a...
Calvin, actually, I'll read the proclamation first, and then you'll have a chance to make some comments.
Sounds good.
Alright, so this is a proclamation in honor of Bike Month in Humboldt County. Whereas bicycling is part of the solution for addressing transportation needs such as increasing mobility for youth and other people who do not drive, providing low-cost transportation options and increasing access and connectivity while reducing traffic congestion. And whereas bicycle infrastructure takes up less land and costs, less to build and maintain than automobile infrastructure, for instance, 12 bike spaces fit into one car parking space. And whereas bicycling is an economic driver in areas with commuter or recreational bike facilities, study after study shows that locally-based retail sales go up with bicycle improvements, and that people spend more money overall at local businesses when they bike than when they drive. And whereas bicycle travel helps improve air quality and can help us achieve the goals of the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006, which requires Californians to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. And whereas bicycle commuting promotes physical activity which leads to better fitness, lower healthcare costs, and improved mental health due to stress reduction. Employees who commute by bicycle on average have fewer sick days and higher productivity. And whereas the county will celebrate the culmination of decades of collaboration, coordination, and public support for world-class trail building with the completion of the Humboldt Bay Trail South, including an opening celebration on June 28th, 2025. And whereas the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors joins the Bike Month Humboldt Coalition in supporting Humboldt jurisdictions and communities in their efforts to advance and improve bicycling for all. And whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, and May is also Clean Air Month, now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors finds increasing bicycle use as in the local, state, national, and global interests, proclaims May 2025 as Bike Month Humboldt, and encourages governments countywide to adopt similar proclamations supporting Bike Month, and urges residents and visitors to participate in Bike Month events and other activities that contribute to the health and vitality of the community and the environment.
Thank you to the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. I accept this May as Bike Month proclamation on behalf of the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health Branch, in the Healthy Communities Division. I am a health education specialist in the Physical Activity and Nutrition Program. Public health supports active transportation projects in the community and participates in local efforts focused on promoting active transportation. Our county has many community partners dedicated to this work. Encouraging active modes of transportation improves public health. When more people walk and bike, communities experience safer streets, a stronger sense of community, reduced traffic demands, and greater physical fitness. Both walking and cycling are great ways to be physically active and are linked to improve mental health. Public health provides training, support, and technical assistance to schools and community partners wishing to promote active transportation. We have several community events happening during the May as Bike Month that we hope you can join. For more information about all the events, you can visit the website at bikemonthhumboldt.org. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna get a picture now, and Supervisor Arroyo's gonna come down. So the next proclamation is gonna be Mental Health Awareness Month, and this is going to be read in by Supervisor Wilson.
Actually, it's myself.
Oh, wait. Mental Health Awareness?
I'm sorry.
No, it's not. Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Wilson will read that in.
Okay.
Hi, are you here for Mental Health Awareness?
Awareness.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. Alright, this is a proclamation in honor of Health Awareness Month. Whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, which is a time to create greater public awareness about mental health, change attitudes about mental illness, promote wellness and recovery, and reduce stigma and discrimination. And whereas mental health challenges are one of the most common health conditions in California, affecting one out of seven adults and impacting both the person experiencing mental health challenges and those who love and care about them. And whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and may feel isolated and alone, some going years before receiving any help. And whereas, one out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health illness has difficulty functioning in everyday life, and if left untreated, has a life expectancy 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas 50% of all mental health disorders begin by age 14, and 75% of all mental health disorders begin by age 24. And whereas compared to the state, Humboldt County faces statistically higher rates of suicide, addiction, homelessness, and homelessness, which are all potential negative outcomes of untreated mental illness. And whereas being open and talking about mental health conditions and treatment can positively impact our community to work to reduce stigma and encourage individuals to reach out for help. And whereas recovery can and does happen, and all Californians and Humboldt County residents should know and support and help, should know that support and help is available regardless of any individual's situation. And whereas Humboldt County continues to invest in mental health services and a robust local continuum of care, including recruiting for mental health professionals and expanding access to mental health resources throughout the county. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health challenges and have a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas, many organizations, including the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, nonprofits, and private agencies, as well as faith-based government programs, with staff who work tirelessly to provide treatment options and improve the lives of local residents and families of those affected with mental illness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May 2025 as May is Mental Health Awareness Month in Humboldt County, and calls upon the community, government agencies, the public, and private institutions, businesses and schools in the county to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps citizens can take to promote their own mental health, and the right for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health needs.
Thank you so much.
It's a two-pager there.
Huh?
It's a two-pager.
Yes, it's very long, but it's worth saying.
It is.
It is. It's important that people of statue come up and say that, you know, we all struggle, we've all been there, maybe you haven't, maybe you have a family member, but the importance of understanding and showing compassion is there. And I just wanna thank you guys for being here. You know, the Hope Center really works hard this month, getting the knowledge out there, the acknowledgement out there that mental health is out there, and that there is recovery, there is support, there is community, and there is wellness. You know, that's what's really important. So just thank you guys for representing and being here for us today.
Thank you. I think Mike's gonna come and get a picture and give you this.
Before I do that, I do wanna, just a couple words on this, which is, we have dedicated institutions and people and organizations and community members working diligently on this issue. And this, and the resources are lacking at every level. I mean, in terms of, in terms of like, the funding required to really do everything that we wanna do in this, in, and also just the access to services. While everyone, as stated here, is trying really, really hard to do that, it's still really challenging, and we don't have all the things that we need. Do we have the heart? Do we have the belief? Do we have all the, we have that. That part we've got.
Yeah.
And I wanna, and the anxiety, we talked about this a little bit yesterday with Health and Human Services and the budget cuts that are coming, especially from the federal side, causing a lot of anxiety. And I think we're gonna have to work even harder, which is something I don't wanna say, because I wanna, I want us to do better and be better with the resources we have. And I wanna say that everyone I know knows somebody with some sort of mental health challenges, whether it's themselves, or someone in their family, or someone that they know real closely, that we're all there. And so, thanks for bringing this to us today, really appreciate it, and we'll go to...
Thank you.
Are we gonna have a public comment on that?
At the end.
Alright, go ahead Supervisor Arroyo has a comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for coming out for this, and also, we're gonna recognize Peer Support Month at next week's meeting, so I know that some folks came out to speak about that, and it was a mix-up on my behalf, so next week we'll be acknowledging that as well. So great opportunity to highlight throughout the month of May, all the folks who support the mental health of our community and the peer support workers will be next week. And, you know, I echo everything that Supervisor Wilson said, and I wore my lime green today, and I know that we're also acknowledging MMIP, but I just wanna say I was repping for Mental Health Month, so thank you for being here to receive that.
Okay, and then we have a letter of appreciation for Carl Hansen. Is anybody here? So we are thanking him for the work on the Headwaters Fund Board, so thank you for that. And then we are gonna go to Supervisor Madron for proclamation of May as Older American Month.
Great, and I believe there is someone here to receive it after I read it into the record. Yeah, good to see you.
How, you can go ahead and come forward to the podium. Thank you.
Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month. Whereas it is time to flip the script on aging by transforming how society perceives, discusses, and approaches aging, challenging outdated stereotypes, dispelling misconceptions, and embracing the opportunities for purpose, exploration, connection, and continued engagement that aging brings. And whereas the Area 1 Agency on Aging, A1AA, brings more than $3 million in state and federal funding to Humboldt and Del Norte Counties to support programs and services that promote independence, health, security, and choice for older adults and their families. And whereas A1AA offers vital services, including enhanced information and assistance, the Volunteer Driver Program to access medical appointments, and Aging in Place Services such as Fall Prevention, Homemaker Assistance, and North Coast Home Share to provide housing support, safety, and advocacy. And whereas A1AA promotes health and wellness through sale, or stay active and independent for life, exercise classes, and CalFresh Healthy Living Nutrition and Activity Programs. And whereas the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program safeguards the rights and dignity of residents in skilled nursing, assisted living, and other long-term care settings by advocating for quality care and respectful treatment. And whereas the Health Insurance Counseling and Advocacy Program, known as HICAP, HighCap, provides unbiased, accurate information about Medicare and assistance in accessing medical resources. And whereas the Aging and Disability Resource Connection, a partnership with Tri-County Independent Living, and the North Coast Health Improvement and Information Network, works to streamline and coordinate services for older adults, people with disabilities, caregivers, and families. And whereas A1AA also provides funding for Local Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meal Sites, legal assistance for older adults, and family caregiver support services. And whereas any reduction in federal estate funding would jeopardize the health, safety, and independence of those served, putting them at greater risk of injury, hospitalization, isolation, institutionalization, and homelessness, outcomes that run counter to the spirit of flipping the script on aging. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes May 2025 as Older Americans Month, and calls upon the community to honor and uplift older adults, advocate for their needs, and join in celebrating this year's theme, Flipping the Script. Congratulations. Thanks for this.
Do you wanna picture? Yeah, we can do a picture. You guys wanna come up here?
I'll send it to you.
Thank you Supervisor Madron, and thank you to the rest of the board here. You saw this year, my proclamation was a little bit longer than usual, and that was because I really wanted to showcase and let people know about the services we do offer, because many people don't know. HighCap is one of our most popular services that helps people 65 and older figure out Medicare. And what we are seeing with all this is that right now, all the investments that the federal and state government have put into these services may be at risk. We're very concerned about that, obviously. I know you're concerned about your budget, and we just wanted people to know what could be at risk here. The state is also preparing to make some tough decisions. So as we celebrate this month and celebrate the work of older adults and the service in the community, we also have to advocate and mobilize and be aware, educate ourselves in terms of what could happen and what the impacts are. Older Americans Act services are, I wouldn't quite say they're the icing on the cake, but without the cake, you don't wanna give people icing. So home and community-based services, keeping people living at home, Medi-Cal services, helping to make sure people have their needs, all these things are at risk. And we work very closely with all those other systems to provide other supports that those systems may not be able to provide. But if those systems go away, then there's nothing we can do to mend that. So we really need to be looking at what the impacts will be, and I know you're doing that, and I don't wanna take too much more of your time, but I do wanna thank you for that. We will be sharing more stories, and I have a couple folks with me. Do you have your stuff with you?
Can I ask you?
Yes.
So you said that there is a program that helps people get onto their, like, Social Security or Medicaid, what was that called?
Medicare.
Medicare.
It's called HighCap.
Okay. How would someone, if they needed that help, how would they find you?
Well, the first thing, before you need that help, I encourage everybody to think about volunteering to provide that help, because it is a great program, it is, but you call our office, our office at Area 1 Agency on Aging.
Okay.
And that's the other thing I wanna do, is showcase that our programs, you know, $3 million is not a lot of money that we bring in here, and we have a very small staff. It's significant, because all the money we bring in here stays here. People spend it at stores and whatever they're doing. But it also supports a huge number of volunteers who make these services happen. So anytime we go out and talk about the services, people always call to get more service, like the Volunteer Driver Program. We tell people we can take them to medical appointments, and we get a bunch of callers. We need the drivers, too. It's a volunteer driver program. So we really encourage people, if they wanna get engaged and wanna help push back against some of the cuts that might be coming, we as a community have to start stepping up, not start, we do step up, but continue to step up and provide those services with, through volunteerism. So I'm gonna introduce Susan Cleverden really quick. She's just gonna give you a few words, if you don't mind. We're tight.
Okay.
Susan Cleverden, Director of our Agency Programs.
Actually...
We gotta stop.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because we have to be consistent, and so we're only allowed one speaker, and then at the end on public comment. If that would be okay, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. I understand.
I just, I can't do it for everybody, so I just have to be consistent.
You don't even have to apologize.
I apologize.
You don't have to apologize. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And so the next proclamation that we're going to is gonna be for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Person Awareness Month in Humboldt County, and this is brought to us by Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you so much. So I know we have a lot of folks here to acknowledge this. I see the ocean of red shirts and red things in the audience.
So everybody is welcome to come forward, and then if we could have one speaker come to the podium, but everybody's welcome to come forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
So feel free to come on up. It's great to see such a show of support for this. I'll read it, and then you'll have a chance to, we'll take a photo, and then we'll have a chance to make some comments. Thank you. Okay. Great, good morning. Impressive turnout, thanks y'all.
You go first, right?
Yeah, I'll read it first, and then we'll take a picture, and then you can make some comments. Thank you. Nice to see you here. Alright. Whereas May is recognized nationally as National Missing or Murdered Indigenous Persons' MMIP Awareness Month, and May 5th as MMIP Awareness Day, a time to increase awareness of missing or murdered indigenous persons whose cases far too often go unresolved. And whereas American Indian and Alaska Native people are at a disproportionate risk of experiencing violence, murder, or going missing, and make up a significant portion of the missing and murdered cases. And whereas the MMIP crisis is prevalent across the United States with indigenous peoples being murdered at a rate 10 times the national average. According to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, homicide is the leading cause of death for Native women ages 10 to 24, and the fifth-leading cause of death for Native women ages 25 to 34. And whereas California has the largest population of Native Americans, more than any other state in the country, and ranks fifth in the nation for uninvestigated unresolved MMIP cases. And whereas in California, cases of missing and murdered indigenous women are seven times less likely to be solved than any other demographic, and data tracking of MMIP is scarce, therefore the actual number is unknown. And whereas in 2020, Savannah's Act was signed into law aiming to improve the federal response to missing or murdered indigenous persons by increasing coordination among federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement agencies. That same year, the Not Invisible Act established a cross-jurisdictional advisory committee composed of law enforcement, tribal leaders, federal partners, service providers, family members of missing and murdered individuals and survivors. And whereas in 2022, the California statewide Feather Alert Program was introduced through Assembly Bill 1314, and became law by adding California Government Code Section 8594.13. A feather alert is a resource available to law enforcement agencies investigating the suspicious or unexplainable disappearance of an indigenous person. And whereas in 2023, the Yurok Tribe, California's largest tribe, hired the first MMIP investigator assigned to assisting tribes and indigenous people throughout the state. And whereas, we believe it is important to remember, honor, and respect those missing and murdered, provide resources to families to bring resolution to their loved ones' disappearance, and try to assist in the healing process. We also must work to bring awareness to the prevention of this epidemic. And whereas the Board of Supervisors supports a diverse workplace by providing a culture for equity and inclusion for all, we believe recognizing and honoring National Missing or Murdered Indigenous Persons Awareness Day and proclaiming May as MMIP Awareness Month is an extension of this initiative. Now therefore be it proclaimed that ongoing May is National Missing or Murdered Indigenous Persons Awareness Month in Humboldt County, to bring awareness to our community, to combat this epidemic, and support paths to healing, and to end the violence and the silence.
Thank you. Ready? Alright. Ay qui, squi yin coi. This is how we say good morning, hello, where I'm from. Reseguini, Rancheria, Puliqua, Clam, California. Before I get started, I wanted to recognize and acknowledge the land that we're on. Traditionally and ancestrally, the homelands of the Wehi people. This place is also known as Jarji.
Jar, help me out.
Jarro Gigi.
Jarro Gigi. And I wanna honor and acknowledge the continued presence of the Wehi... And I want to honor and acknowledge the continued presence of the Wia tribe community today, that they are a reminder that, as Native people, we are truly strong and resilient despite what has happened. This should be done more respectfully. My name is Tony Stenhouse. I'm a Down River Native American. I love my people, but we need your help. We need you to listen. We need your support. We need you to stop looking the other way. There was a boy named Devonte or Dante Jones. He was a 12-year-old boy. He was playing in front of his house. He was shot in the head and drugged into the bushes in Clameth, California. The only suspect was released, even though there was witnesses, there was proof, the whole community knew of the wrongdoings from the Justice Department. There was no justice for Dante. On January 27, 2025, a 14-year-old girl, Native American girl named Emily Pike, she went missing from her group home. Two weeks later, her disremembered remains were found along the highway over 100 miles away from her group home. Her arms and hands are still missing to this day. Why do Native American girls and women go missing at alarming rates, and oftentimes their cases are ignored? We need people to stop ignoring the signs. Human trafficking is real. It's happening every day. Please stand with me and help me protect our children. Please try to be more mindful of this manner. No more stolen sisters, no more killing our brothers, no more. Before I leave, I wanted to say, how dare staff be allowed to mock this day and wear Star Wars things? This was a serious matter. It's not May 4th. I'm just letting you guys know, you guys are studying out the wrong messages. It's the last thing we never intended to take away from any group, and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So anybody that wants to make public comment on this item will do so at the end of the consent calendar. So the next proclamation is CalFresh Awareness Month. Is there somebody here for CalFresh Awareness? Hi, welcome. Thank you for being here. So Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclamation, the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services staff strive to ensure CalFresh benefits are accessible to all eligible Humboldt County residents and utilized to the fullest. And whereas CalFresh helps provide food security for more than 31,400 Humboldt County residents, including more than 7,900 children, 1,900 college students, and 6,000 elderly community members. And whereas DHHS and community partners work hard to make sure our most vulnerable population have food on their tables and to get these benefits out to eligible community members who are experiencing economic hardships. And whereas our local Humboldt County economy benefited from the more than 70 million in federal CalFresh dollars that were spent on food by county residents in 2024. And whereas DHHS Social Service Branch staff has relationships with community-based organizations and Medi-Cal providers that help refer people to the CalFresh program, which creates an important link to these benefits for people experiencing food insecurities. And whereas CalFresh funding pays for the Benefit Assistance Program, nutrition, education accomplished through public health, funding local outreach programs, helping children access-free and reduce costs for school meals, supporting local farms through the Market Match Farmers Market Program, and supporting job placement through CalFresh employment and training support to the Helping Humboldt Employment Empowerment Program. Now therefore be it resolved, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May 2025 as CalFresh Awareness Month by honoring the work the CalFresh program accomplishes through community agencies and social service staff to help, staff to help alleviate food insecurities among Humboldt County residents.
Thank you, Board, for bringing this proclamation forth today for May being CalFresh Awareness Month. Also want to give a shout out to social services teams and our community-based organizations for assisting in bringing awareness around CalFresh. CalFresh is a needed benefit for our community, which helps peoples meet needs as well as bringing money into our community. And also, one note I want to say is that both food or lack of food and mental health go hand in hand, so I really appreciate sharing this month with mental health awareness as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next proclamation is coming from Supervisor O'Royo, and it's National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day.
Hi. Hi, good to see you.
Welcome.
All right. I see you have the blue bag.
I'm just here to hold the bag.
To showcase, great. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect nonperishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks, such as Food For People, the Food Bank for Humboldt County, and its partner pantries in individual local communities. And whereas since 1993, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive has collected more than 1.9 billion pounds of food nationwide, and in 2024 brought in more than 44 million pounds of food in more than 10,000 cities in all 50 states. And whereas more than 44 million people live in hunger every day in America, including more than 13 million children. And whereas Humboldt County letter carriers collected more than 39,000 pounds of food from local community members in 2024, providing critical food resources for Food For People's county network of 23 food pantries, serving more than 21,000 Humboldt County residents of all ages. And whereas the rising cost of living, including groceries, gasoline, housing, utilities, and medical care, is having a serious impact on low-income children, seniors, and families, particularly those living on fixed incomes. And whereas we recognize all the letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, and we appreciate community members' support of the food drive, all of the food collected in each community stays in that community. Now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim Saturday, May 10th, 2025, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and asks all residents of Humboldt County for their support by leaving a nonperishable food donation next to their mailbox on the second Saturday in May for their letter carrier to pick up and deliver to local food banks and pantries.
Well, first off, I want to thank you all for recognizing this day. We're exceptionally grateful to our partners, supporters, and all the really hard-working letter carriers who make this food drive possible. Letter carriers work on the front lines, often getting to know our friends and neighbors, and especially those experiencing poverty and food insecurity. On this day, letter carriers work double duty, picking up thousands of pounds of food to deliver to food banks while also delivering mail. And it is the single-largest, single-day food drive in the county and nationwide. The timing of this food drive couldn't be more crucial. Food For People is serving 21,000 individuals in our county every single month right now, and things are not looking up. Not only have pantries distributed most of the food that was already collected during the holidays, but we're heading into summer, when many families don't have the safety net of school meals. And they're going to be providing many more meals to hungry children. Additionally, our community is facing dangerous cuts to vital safety net programs. From the feds on down to locally, we're seeing almost approximately a million dollars reduction in food resources for food banks and food pantries. And that really comes down to families. That's a million meals that won't make it to children, families, and seniors. This means reliable access is a stabilizing force in our community and any community. It contributes to the overall well-being of households and communities. And when people don't have access to the food they need to feed themselves, they often have to make really hard decisions, be that paying their rent, paying their utility, or medical bills. Looking beyond our doors, Food For People is not the only one. Our network of food partners throughout this community, who provide everything from childcare to housing to senior services, as we heard earlier, are seeing vast cuts that threaten the safety net in our community. As we work to ensure we can continue to support people experiencing food insecurity in our county, the support of our local letter carriers and community is essentially, essential and vital. I want to express our deep gratitude to our community of supporters, our supporters in the county, and our hard-working letter carriers. And if you have the means, I encourage you to fill up the blue bag that got delivered to your door with the nonperishable food donations, and put it out for your letter carriers this Saturday, so that they can bring it to your community and to people who need it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that's this Saturday, blue bags.
This Saturday. You all should have already gotten your bags in the mail.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there any other item on the consent calendar that any supervisor would like to speak to? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that the longstanding Old Timers Parade is happening in Orleans on June 15th. So if you happen to be out in that area, please join in with the celebrations for the Old Timers Parade.
Okay. All right, we're going to go out to public comment, and we'll start with the Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Kansas City, calling from Mexico. Few things got pulled, I was going to talk to her, I'm going to be in transit, may not be able to come out, call there on 1670, 4:00, I didn't do it. So I did wish to, against item 10, missing indigenous people, missing and murdered. It's something that before you, on a daily basis, where I'm speaking on a topic, may not have happened to these particular wonderful individuals that I refer to, but it's quite possible, if not probable, it will. So it's better to be preemptive on those things. Item D19, the MOU of Law Enforcement Management, LEMs, they did a one-time, I could be corrected, you may wish to correct it, because we do have a lot of union people there, a one-time $1,500. This is non-recurring and non-pension-related. So for the workers who are in the room there, I know you don't have me, too, but I strongly support you doing that, especially for the lower-income people. These LEMs are probably some of the higher-paid ones, I'd guess, and I'd like to see parity and equity happen. And maybe everybody can get that thing, since you're giving it this one specific group. I'm old, so older Americans, I definitely qualify for that. And then, of course, I think 15 got pulled, and anyway, I will try to talk on that, like towards that, 15, 16, and 17, and thank you for my opportunity to be on the consent calendar today.
Thank you, that's all, Chair.
Okay, we're going to go to public comment on consent calendar, so items on the consent calendar only, and we're going to start with Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning, Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. I've missed all of you, and I'm sure you haven't missed me. However, I'm here, and I want to speak about mental health awareness. The majority of people who have mental health conditions have experienced trauma, actually all of them, okay? So all those people down there that you guys keep ignoring, that are homeless, et cetera, but then yet you apply for funding, the real root of the problem is trauma. It's trafficking. And unfortunately, we have a huge trafficking ring in this area, and you guys continue to allow it to happen. If you stop that from happening, you stop having to allocate funds for these folks, okay? So let's stop it at the root of the problem. Stop the trauma. Stop contributing to the trauma. Stop turning your back to the trauma, and start calling people out on it, okay? That's mental health awareness. MMIP, continuously, since colonization, we've had modern-day slavery. Again, trafficking, trafficking, trafficking. Stop the trafficking. Stop separating it. It is trauma-related. Yes, it's disproportionate to Native Americans. Why? Because of colonization. We were here prior to all that. Native Americans were here on this land, living harmoniously with the land. Then came colonization with Great Britain coming in. Whereas Great Britain, English, Wales, Scotland, okay? During the wars, people were literally awarded, my fifth great-grandmother was awarded in to an English family, okay? So again, MMIP, I'm also in support of justice for Dante. Please, stop. Stop covering up. Stop allowing these people to continue to do this. This is not acceptable. Again, I want to call out, I want to say something positive. Yesterday, I met the cutest 93-year-old man at jury duty. His name was Clarence, and he wanted to do jury duty, but he had five appointments. And they said, you know, you can sign this part right here. And he said, no, no, I want to do jury duty. And I looked at him, and I said, Clarence, what is your secret? And he said, I like being here. I enjoy seeing how these people try to get these people off, and I like being the smartest person in the room. We do need to start listening to our elderly folks. Those elderly folks also have some stories to tell about MMIP, about mental health awareness. Stop letting people traumatize others, including the elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
I don't know if this is the time, I wanted to schedule a future item on the agenda.
You actually need to, you can talk to one of the board members after, or talk with the...
I'd like to talk to all of you for a moment.
What is the item you want to speak on today?
It's about Discover Humboldt Tourism Video.
Okay, you need to do that on non-agenda items.
Okay.
Which is coming up next.
Just wait a little bit, thank you, very much.
Or coming up after, and two more times. Hi, good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Verda Pitts, and I am a proud Karuk tribal member. I am a mother, and I'm an advocate for justice. Today, I want to honor Iris Moon, Curtis Hunsinger, Emily Rizling, Anna Flasnik, and many, many others. They're not just names, they are lives. They are my family. I'm directly related to Iris Moon and Anna Flasnik. My blood runs through their stories, and my family carries the weight of their loss. These tragedies are deeply personal, not distant headlines, but wounds that have never healed. For decades, indigenous people in Humboldt County have gone missing or been murdered, and again and again, their cases have been ignored, buried, and forgotten, but not forgotten. These victims are not just failed by individuals, they are failed by systems that are supposed to protect them. Humboldt County has received millions in state and federal funding to address MMIP. Yet we are left asking, where has the money gone? Where are the resources, and where is the justice? We know this is not just about individual crimes, it's about a pattern of inaction, systemic neglect, and a historical violence that continues today. Families are left to fight for answers while the silence grows louder. Still, I have hope. I believe change is possible if the right people are in place, people who will listen, who will act, and who will lead with integrity and heart. MMIP is not a checkbox, it is a crisis. It demands commitment, not funding, not just funding. We're healing the children we once were, children who needed protection and never got it. And we are standing for every indigenous life still vulnerable today. It is not a moment, it is a movement, and we will not stop until the missing are found, the murdered are honored, and justice is something that we no longer have to beg for. Yesterday, we did attend the MMIP walk at the UROC Reservation, and it was really, really, a lot of effort went into it. It was a really nice event. And shame on me for not remembering her name, but the elder that spoke, she said our Creator gave us the ultimate, most strong weapon, and that is love. And love is stronger than anything else, and I'm driven by love for certain special little people, and that is really powerful to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room want to make public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm closing public comment, and can I have a motion from the board, please?
I'll move consent, minus all the items that were listed previously. Thanks.
One second.
So now we're going to go on to items pulled from cons...
I'm still waiting on one supervisor.
It's me, and it's not up for me, so, oh, let me, one sec. I think I can troubleshoot this myself. Did it? Did it work?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, so we're going to go on to items pulled from consent calendar, and we're going to go to item 13. going to go to item 13, first, which was brought to this board by Supervisor Wilson and myself, and this is a letter of opposition to the release of sexually violent predator Richard Stobart. And I believe that Stacy Eads and Kyla are going to come forward, yep, and have some things to say. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the proposed potential letter that this court is considering submitting on behalf of the community, really, regarding the potential release of Richard Stobart into the community of Manila. Just a little bit of background regarding this particular matter, Mr. Stobart is a sexually violent predator. He's been adjudicated as such via civil proceedings, and a jury found that to be the case beyond a reasonable doubt in 2016. Mr. Stobart began sexually violent offenses in 1981 when he preyed upon his first victim, who was an 18-year-old college student. He raped her at knife point in her college dorm. Mr. Stobart was convicted, there was a jury trial related to that particular offense, and he was sentenced to state prison. After serving only five years for that offense, Mr. Stobart was released on parole. It wasn't long before he was reoffending, victimizing women. His range of victims included from the 18-year-old up into the age of 71-year-old female victim. He raped a 41-year-old. He raped a number of victims, almost always with the use of a mask covering his identity as he slipped into their homes. He almost always, if not always, was armed with either a firearm or a knife when he committed these offenses. Because of his mental health disorder and the fact that that disorder made him more likely to commit sexually violent offenses, he was, as I previously indicated, committed to the state hospital as a sexually violent predator. In December of 2023, Mr. Stobart had petitioned, and there was a court trial regarding whether Mr. Stobart could safely be released back into the community on a conditional release program. The court found in December of 2023 that it believed that in fact, Mr. Stobart could be released if he was on a conditional release program. Because of that order, Liberty Healthcare, which is the program that's contracted to supervise individuals that are released on conditional release into a community, they've been searching for a potential placement for Mr. Stobart. The first potential placement that's been presented with the approval, if you will, of both the Department of State Hospitals as well as Liberty, is a home located in Manila. This is an entirely inappropriate potential placement for a person such as Mr. Stobart, and specifically for Mr. Stobart. That particular residence is located in a semi-rural location. It would take approximately 16 minutes for that, you know, that's the average response time for the Sheriff's Department to respond if there's some sort of incident. There's no plan in place in terms of how Mr. Stobart will be supervised by the Liberty Healthcare program. We don't know what the terms and conditions would be for that. We do know that he would have to be on GPS monitoring, but who exactly is monitoring that and how will they respond if there's some sort of violation? So there are a number of concerns regarding that potential placement. My office has been opposed throughout. We were the entity that had Mr. Stobart committed to the Coalinga State Hospital to begin with, and we continue to oppose his potential release. We maintain that he's a dangerous individual that is likely to reoffend if returned to the community. Tomorrow, there currently is a hearing where community members should be given the right by the court to address their concerns that they may or may not have regarding the potential placement of Mr. Stobart in the community of Manila. The last I heard, this particular hearing was scheduled for 10:15. The Honorable Caleb Cockrum is going to preside over the proceedings, and he will hopefully give community members the opportunity to address the court and outline why they believe this is an appropriate placement or an inappropriate placement for Mr. Stobart. The matter is in court right now, and that's why I am hesitating a little bit about the finality of this court date being scheduled for tomorrow, but the last I heard, that's the case. Department of State Hospitals was trying to continue the case, they weren't really providing us all the information regarding that continuance request, so, so we will hopefully be able to confirm the, the court hearing a little bit later. I would like to give Chief Baxley an opportunity to address the efforts that she and her team have made in terms of, you know, evaluating the potential placement in Manila and concerns that came to light. Thank you.
Good morning, Chief Baxley.
Good morning. So as mentioned by DA Eads, we got the information that potential property searches had begun in December of 2023. When we were made aware, and due to some confidentiality restrictions, we were unable to present to the public this particular address, we began some proactive efforts in which to showcase the inacceptability of this particular placement in Manila. Liberty presented a site assessment in which I found to be completely subjective and a misrepresentation of what Manila is made of, to include the bus stops, the schools, the daycares, the parks, the open spaces, the open public spaces. Manila, over the last several years, has gone under some miraculous improvements and a very rightfully prideful community in regards to those communities, but as with any community has its vulnerabilities, which makes this all the more reason in which this placement is not appropriate. And one may ask, what does appropriate placement for a predator look like? That's yet to be shown, it's yet to be proven, but we know without a shadow of a doubt, Manila is not the place for him. So I appreciate this opportunity to convey to the board and to the public that we continue to aggressively oppose this placement and advocate for the community members specific to that of Manila.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone.
Am I wrong in feeling that this sounds like Richard Cooley all over again?
It, it's very similar in terms of the fact that both Mr. Cooley and Mr. Stobart are adjudicated as sexually violent predators and had civil commitments. So after they've served their prison sentence, there were evaluations done, and there was a determination, a trial, and that, so yes, so it's procedurally very similar. What is a little bit different is that for Mr. Cooley, the recommendation of Liberty as well as State Hospitals at the time that the placement order was made, they opined that Mr. Cooley could not be safely placed in the community on conditional release. And so after many community placement hearings-
He's backing Coalinga.
-the court finally reversed its order, which we opposed from the get-go. And, but for Mr. Stobart's a little different in that somehow Liberty Healthcare and the Department of State Hospitals felt that he could be safely released on conditional release. So despite the fact that he is an extremely violent individual, and the nature of his crimes were simply sadistic, so it's similar but different.
And Liberty reported to us on him, and I, I mean, I guess to subject it down, this is their business, and they will, I mean, the costs if he was to be placed in our county is extreme, plus the threat of violence, consistent violence that he's shown, so I appreciate Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bushnell bringing the letter forward, and I appreciate your efforts on this, and we might be at the hearing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know that there was a community meeting out in Manila, and I think Supervisor Wilson's going to say a little bit on that, and then we will go out to public comment, and then the board can talk about whether we want to sign the letter. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I will speak to that. It was on Monday of last week, I think. We had a meeting, I want to thank the Manila Community Services District for hosting that, and I want to thank the DA's office and the sheriff for being present and helping answer the community their questions on how to engage and how to participate in that. I think there was, the message was very clear, and the information was very good. I reminded everybody, whatever they hear on the internet, but it is not actually as accurate as what they're going to hear from, from the DA and the sheriff on this. And so I, I want to thank you for, for coming and participating in that. I encouraged everybody to write their letters, to put in their emails, if you can, before you leave. One more time, tell everyone where they can, where they can do that. It is, I submitted one myself, and fortunately, I can't be at the meeting tomorrow, or tomorrow there, I have an out-of-town commitment, but I am sure there will be plenty of representation there, and if Supervisor Bone wants to show up, please, by all means, represent, I appreciate that. Yeah, this is, this is not, this is a high-anxiety situation, I will say. The community is very, very upset. It's not just Manila, also Arcata, there's, the memory of these, of these crimes is, is burned in to the, to the minds and, and to the soul of, of these, of the people in the place, and so, thanks for these efforts, and we'll see what we can do to not have this happen to us. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to say something?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I would just like to let folks know that if they would like to submit a letter, comment to regarding this issue, they're welcome to do so by emailing the district attorney's office. If you want to drop off a letter, you can do that, we're on the fourth floor. You can also provide them to the Sheriff's Department. We're all working together to put these letters together. I know there was a petition regarding the opposition of the potential placement. Last I heard, there were well over 450 signatures to that petition alone. We've received hundreds of letters. It's definitely representative of the strong feelings that this community has regarding the potential placement of Stobart, and so certainly when this significant public safety issue comes forward, the community comes together, so we're very grateful for that.
Thank you. While this board will send a letter and it makes a statement, it is imperative that you, as an individual, if you have a daughter, or a grandma, or yourself, in fear for this placement in Humboldt County, that you express that in your own letter. While our board is making a statement, the personal effects that it has on people are so important for the judge to hear, and so I encourage everyone, if you want to show up, or even anybody, you know, my husband fears for our daughter if this person is released, and, and so it's super important that those personal feelings really get displayed in a letter or in a statement tomorrow. And I think Supervisor Arroyo wanted to make a statement.
Thank you. I fully support the letter, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with the community. There are folks in, in my district on the small peninsula, you know, adjoining Supervisor Wilson's district, who also are very concerned about this, I know have written letters. I had to chair a meeting at the same time as the, as the Monday night meeting that you held, so I was unable to be there, but anyway, I really appreciate the efforts to inform the community. And one of the things I heard from some of my constituents after that meeting was that there was discussion around cellphone receptivity, or reception, and the, and supervised release involving-
The GPS monitoring.
GPS monitoring, and I wondered if you could speak a little bit about that, and then I, it didn't, I know it's, there's a lot more information that can, then can go in this letter, but I thought it might make sense to modify it slightly to make reference to that, if that's one of the, you know, that's a significant barrier, so I was hoping you could speak to that.
Right, so if there's poor reception, obviously there wouldn't be the 24/7, you know, supervision that is contemplated. The other issue that we have is that we really don't know what the plan is, so if there is somebody that's supposed to be supervising Mr. Stobart, you know, if there is a, if he goes out of whatever range they give him, which we don't know what that is, because we really don't have the plan, which is one of the, you know, bases for our strong objection to Mr. Stobart's release, so that's certainly a concern. So if he were to be monitored, but that monitor wasn't, you know, able to actually provide the signal, then what's the point? And so there's that, that opportunity for him to violate his terms and conditions, or, you know, worst-case scenario, reoffend.
Okay, I don't know if the board is interested in, so there's a statement that the selected location in Manila is particularly concerning due to its small-size, limited resources in proximity to vulnerable populations. I think it could be encapsulated in limited resources, but, you know, poor cellphone reception for GPS tracking, or something like that, that might make sense to go in there, is that, I think, I'm sure you'll be making that case anyway very strongly tomorrow, but do folks feel like it should be modified to reflect that?
I mean, I'm fine with it, but I do think the case is going to be made very strongly, and I do want to say that the sheriff is out of town, and I spoke with him yesterday and Sunday about this letter, and he would be here today if he was not at a meeting, he's in Sacramento, and his office opposes the release of this gentleman as well, and, and one of his concerns was the, there's not great cellphone or monitoring services or intermittent service out there that could lose tracking on the ankle device or whatever the device is. So I'm not opposed to putting that in there, if you would like, that's totally fine, and makes sense, so. Stacy, if you don't have anything else, I'm going to go out to public comment, please stay though, because there might be some questions from public comment.
Stay here, or?
Yeah, right there, it's fine.
Okay, all righty.
So we'll go out to public comment, we'll start on the Zoom.
Thank you Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Kansas Waskey, I think you've all shared your concerns, the DA and the head investigator there. It makes no sense that this kind of person should be released here. It's not only not fair to the community, but it's not fair to him. You want to give him the best chance of coming back into society, if he's all capable, and that should happen in some kind of transition or halfway house somewhere, there's got to be one somewhere in California, we think, if there ever there should be, that specializes in giving these people the best chance as far as them re-entering society or determining that they cannot re-entering society without causing further harm to the rest of society. So I don't know what this group is and what they base their, their criteria for releasing someone of this nature in the society, but I think they need to, to maybe get a little more common sense, I guess that's what it'd be. So the place should be where this person can get the help he needs, probably a larger suburban area, but have that kind of halfway house. That's my comment, and I strongly support the letter, and I strongly support that people are able to go to court hopefully to be allowed to testify, thank you for my opportunity to speak on this topic.
Thank you. Caller 2223, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, this is Craig Johnson, and I'm calling in complete opposition to this. There is absolutely no condition on this earth why this man should be put into any community. We don't need to pass the buck to some other community to have the same pain and grief relived. This hearing, our DA speak this morning gave me chills, just her having to reiterate, like, I normally don't have a lot for words, but I do.
This cannot happen.
This cannot happen.
And I lost my, why have I been doing that?
I'm hearing some background noise, should I continue? Am I still here?
Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead Craig, we, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I normally don't have a lot for words, but after hearing what he did and how he did it was thickening to me. And it's not just about his ankle bracelet having signal, it's about my daughter's having signal in that area. For surfers, I can only imagine the fear of the population out there. You're coming out of the water, you're in your wet suit, your phone's in your car. You can't even report that there's a, this man in the, in the dunes. And the dunes, you could be hiding five feet from somebody and not see them. You could be down in one of those dunes and not even have signal. This is absolutely unacceptable, and we need to fight this all the way through, and not to push it to another community either. We don't want to hear, we don't want this to go to another community and have some other- other room full of people like this morning hear what this man did. Like, this is toxic, really toxic. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and under no condition can this man be let out into any community. Thank you.
That is all, Chair.
Okay. So, we're going to go to public comment in the room, but I think before we do that, Kyla, do you have an update about court tomorrow?
No, but I can get one by the end of public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So, we're going to go public comment in the room. Does anybody in the room have anything to say?
About this?
Yeah, about this? Yeah. Morning, Mario.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Mario Calson. I'm a resident of Manila and a member of the Peninsula Community Collaborative, which is a group that's trying to make improvements to the community and heal trauma that's been in our community, and poverty, and things that are hard to work against. And this really sets us back, creates a lot of fear in our community. So, I'm here to, first off, thank Sheriff Hansel for bringing this into the light and making us aware that this proposal was coming to our community, and also to thank the DA's office for engaging, and for you, the Board of Supes, for engaging and being receptive to this idea and sending a clear message. There's intense fears throughout our community, and I want to represent my family. I have two daughters and a son, and two nieces, and neighbors, and it's very intense. The house proposed is owned by folks that don't live in the community and stand to make large profits from renting through the ConRep program, and that's hard to ignore. The house is within 500 feet of Milel Dunes, 500 feet of multifamily housing, three-quarters of a mile to the community park and miniature golf, just under a mile to daycare, just over a mile to elementary school. It was, I really appreciate that caller that called in earlier articulated a lot of the fears related to the dunes and the network of trails, which we all enjoy and really hope to keep enjoying, but this really presents a big challenge for our community. So, I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. Come forward.
I'm not going to take very long. My name is Alice. I am here to speak on what you guys are talking about. I do go to the Manila, like Manila has been doing amazing things out there. It was acknowledged back here. To step backwards would be crazy. I mean, their park is right there. I mean, walking distance to a park where kids and families go daily to enjoy the Manila area, much less their golf course and the school, and et cetera. I think it's very important to highlight what you guys have already highlighted, which is the lack of constant reception in that area, mixed with the dunes and the ability to hide in anything out there. But I think it was stated earlier, and I think it's really a good highlight as well, which is 16-minute average response time, that's an average response time. That's not good. And if this person is to be in somewhere, again, I agree with the person on the phone a moment ago, who was like, this shouldn't happen at all, but ultimately, a 16-minute response time is not enough for somebody who has this stuff going on. So, I am with everybody else here and disagreeant of this person being released in this area. So, thank you so much for allowing the public comment to happen and allow the public to come forward in helping facilitate that.
Thanks, Alice. Hi, good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Alina Ogazaki. I grew up in Manila, so I'm very familiar with the community of Manila. It's, growing up, the power would go out. So, it's not just the ankle monitor, it's that the power would go out. So, he would be, there would be an opportunity for him to not be monitored. It's also close proximity to Cal Poly Humboldt. You can walk to Cal Poly. So, allowing this predator to be allowed out in the public, it's like letting a fox into the hen house. Like, it's unbelievable. We cannot allow this to happen. We have limited resources as sheriffs. There's going to have to be more patrols. It's just going to be a huge handicap to all, to the limited resources that we already have in Humboldt County. I strongly oppose this. I strongly oppose this. I do not think it is a good idea to allow this man out. And it's, we're standing here talking about missing and murdered indigenous women, and there's people living in Manila, it's like, we're, this is a strong action that we can take to not allow this to happen. Someone from the public stood up and said, "We need to do something. We need direct action." And this would be direct action. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the room have public comment on this item? Okay, CNN, I will close public comment. And did we have an update on court in the morning?
Yes, I spoke to the attorney present. It's being heard tomorrow at 8:30 for a motion to continue, but the 10:15 calendar remains set, so nothing changes. However, it seems to be a fluid process, as things can happen at 8:30, but otherwise, the 10:15 timeframe remains set.
So, the 8:30 would be whether they're an accept the continuance, and then the 10:30 would be for public to come and comment if they need? Or Stacy, do you know? Or Kyla?
Exactly right, except the 10 o'clock is 10:15.
10:15.
And so, it's in courtroom one, last I heard, and that's second floor of the courthouse, opposite end of where the elevators are.
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Wilson?
A quick clarification. So, if it's decided to continue it, there won't be a 10:15. Is that right? Or am I wrong with that?
That's right.
So, I just want to make sure that our PIO and yours are prepared for if there is a continuance, that we notify the community as quickly as possible, because there's a lot of people arranging their day to be here at 10:15, and I just want to make sure that if we can save people the trouble and the trip, then however we can, that would be great. Thanks.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yeah, I'm wondering in this process, I mean, it seems like the other process whereby it was determined that he could be released would be that the point where victim impact statements would be impactful, but is this also a process where people who are victims or related to his prior victims have been able to participate?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that's very powerful, and I appreciate that that opportunity exists.
And they're terrified.
I'm sure. I'm sure they are. Yeah. So, the bravery and courage of people who are speaking out is really notable here, as always, but this is a particularly scary situation, so. And my understanding is that this individual has not participated in any sex offender-related treatment?
That's inaccurate.
Oh, okay.
He, prior to his commitment hearing, he had not.
Okay.
And so, after he was committed to the state hospital, then he went through the sex offender treatment program that they offer there at the Coalinga State Hospital. So, that was part of what the court took into consideration when the court made the decision to enter the order for his release.
Thank you. I think my support for the letter absolutely remains. Supervisor Boone?
And just to clarify for people that are out there, he is incarcerated in state prison still, right now, right? Or is he?
No, he's not. So, he, after he committed his number of rape offenses and was sentenced in 1988 to serve 45 years in state prison, he went and served some of that, and then he was released, going to be released on parole. We were, our office was notified of that, and I think it was in 2012 that we filed the petition for him to be committed. He committed to the state hospital, so he still was in custody. So, he's been incarcerated through all of these proceedings. The Coalinga State Hospital is not a prison. It's a lockdown treatment facility that specifically addresses sexually violent predators. So, it's a very, very, very small group of individuals that qualify as sexually violent predators. So, it's not technically state prison. It's state hospital, lockdown.
He's not in our midst now, though?
Yes. You're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If we could get, I'm happy to make a motion, and if you want, we can add to the letter just, and I can work with you after, but add a little blurb about not very good service out in the Manila area. So, we'll add that. So, I'm happy to make that motion, if I could get a second?
Second.
Okay. I closed public comments, sir.
I was trying to get any breadth there.
Okay, come forward.
My name is Jan Kreplin. I'm a 50-year resident of Freshwater. We had a similar situation there. One of the arguments we made that I haven't heard here is a lot of the people are armed, have guns out there, and it made the whole place much more dangerous, because people would be, so the level of violence would also increase, and it was close to a school and things like this. But we won, and that was part of our argument. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that. Closing public comment again, and I think we have a motion. If you want to vote, please.
I sent it out. Is it all popping up? Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, DA. Thank you, Kyla. Okay, so now, we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items, and we're going to start on the Zoom.
There is none, Chair.
Public comment in the room on non-agenda items.
Good morning again, Kelly Metcalf. I stand before you as not only an advocate against trafficking, but I'm also a victim. My daughter wasn't so fortunate to make it out. I'm here, still alive, and I am going to be continuously advocating. I'm advocating against specifically familial trafficking, but all types of trafficking. Unfortunately, I have some statistics here regarding that about 41% of all trafficking cases are familial trafficking cases. I would disagree with that number. I think this is much, much higher, especially in Humboldt County. And unfortunately, it is so hard to recognize. As a person who has survived familial trafficking, I personally didn't know until just recently, even though my daughter was murdered, sold into a trafficking ring here locally. And there's been many people that have, along the way, have fought against me and also have taken my grandson away. And I want to specifically mention Carmella Wanger. This is a letter that Carmella Wanger wrote. And I also had Sarah Caber, Judge Sarah Caber, who's a commissioner. She's not an elected judge, unfortunately. However, Commissioner Sarah Caber granted a five-year restraining order. I'm an RN. I have no violence history. I own no guns. I am completely not violent. However, Sarah Caber granted a five-year restraining order. Some of it was based on this letter written by Carmella Wanger. This is a call-out, okay? Honorable Kelly Neal, she is elected, and she also is all over my particular case in my grandparents' rights case. This letter from Carmella Wanger basically says that she's in support of my grandpa's father and stepmother, and the purpose of the letter is to give, share information about the psychological and emotional needs of a child of his age. I would say that Carmella Wanger is not appropriate to be doing this any longer. I will be going to the Board of Behavioral Sciences in regards to Carmella Wanger. I will also be going to the bar in regards to Sarah Caber and her granting that five-year restraining order. I know somebody who was abused by their partner and couldn't get a restraining order, couldn't even get a three-year restraining order. Me, I don't have a violence history, and she granted a five-year. There's something wrong here, folks. This is a letter. I'll send it to you all so that you all can see it. This lady needs to be stopped. This is part of the trafficking ring. So is Honorable Neal. Let's do it.
Thank you, Kelly. Hi, come forward. Hello there.
Hi. What a shame to hear such bad things about such a beautiful place, now July. My name is Jan Kreplin. I'm a 15-year resident of Freshwater, except for a few years living in Manhattan and working overseas for PBS and NBC. I'm here about the tourism video, and I'd like to get a spot on the future agenda to bring this up and talk more about it. I've done several in and around Arcata, and one for HSU that was sent around. Discover Humboldt was actually done 25 years ago under the old NTSC format, and it was voted the second-best in the state after Long Beach for tourism videos that year. What it basically does, it has dozens of citizen narrators describing Humboldt, so you get to meet some of the people, and it's original music by Brooks Otis, David Dugan, and engineered by Tim Gray at Big Bang Studios. It was shown on access every day around 5:00, so that people could see it, you know, that we're staying in hotels and things, encourage them to stay a day longer. We put up hotel tent cards in hotel rooms to say, and so, I brought some copies now, but I can make a lot of copies for you before the agenda item or when it occurs. This is on the old NTSC format, four-by-three, but that can be upgraded using a system called Topaz. And there are different ways to update the program. Some new footage needs to be shot. For example, the Statue of McKinley isn't in Arcata anymore. Eureka's a Coast Guard city, and some great things like that. So, one of the best things about it is at the end, David Dugan, one of the musicians with his two daughters, says, "Please take good care of our county when you're here, so that your children can bring their children here." Well, his daughters are now grown up.
You can't shut the door. I'm sorry. Please open it back up.
So that, you know, they, you could update it with them peering at the very end, saying, "Yes, we're here now, and please do come and enjoy it." And we're looking for the right kind of tourists to be here, you know, people who will enjoy it, say positive things about it, and treat our county really beautifully, not like some of the stuff that you've heard. So, I don't know if you want me to leave these copies. There's a DVD and some...
Yes, if you could please give them to our counsel, and he will pass them down to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I really appreciate it. Hi, welcome.
Good morning again. And I echo what he said. It is so unfortunate that there are so many scary things happening in a beautiful place, and I don't miss the beauty of this area one single day, and I have to tell myself constantly, not everybody is bad, and believe that there are good people and people who want to be good. With that being said, more than a decade ago, I stood here for the first time in support of my sister Angela. She was nearly killed for speaking against child abuse. At that time, she was stabbed for going public about sexual abuse against a minor. At that time, the district attorney pressured her to accept a plea deal and tried to do a backdoor $50,000 payout in exchange for no justice. She declined. Because we have never been here for money, we're here for justice. Since then, we've learned just how deep this goes. Abuse isn't happening only in homes. It's happening in businesses, in institutions, and even in some rancherias. Places like Sun Valley Floral Farms are not innocent. Rancherias are profiting from child abuse and murder. That is not tradition. It is exploitation, and it is betrayal. Let me be very clear. The abuse the children are enduring is not minor. We're talking about rape, torture, coercion, psychological warfare, so severe that some never fully recover, and that is probably a good part of the children, young adults you see on the streets, who are dubbed crazy. This abuse is being recorded and distributed and profited from. Child sexual abuse material is one of the most lucrative criminal markets in the world, and it is absolutely happening right here. So, here Angela and I are again, more than 10 years later, hoping that things have changed, hoping that the right people are now in place, people with courage and the will to protect children rather than protect power. We hope this community is ready to face the truth, no matter how uncomfortable it is, and to take action. There are people in power who know, and they're choosing not to act. That is called conscience, conscious avoidance. That is called conscious avoidance, a legal term for deliberately refusing to acknowledge wrongdoing to protect yourself. So this is your warning. If you are choosing not to see, you are not neutral. You are complicit. We will not be silenced. We will not be intimidated. And we will not stop until every institution, every business, and every individual who allowed this to happen is held accountable. We will save our children. We will save the children.
Thank you. I do want to announce that Item 16, Introduction of Nitrous Oxide Ordinance, and Item 17 will come after lunch today. Or not after lunch, after closed session. Hi, please come forward. Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Joshua Kopic. I am a county employee, and I'm here as an ASHME representative or a member of ASHME. I speak to you today after a year. Congratulations, we've made it a year of ASHME joining your meetings on a regular basis. You might ask yourselves, why does ASHME show up to these meetings? Why have we been showing up here for a year? And if you are asking that, then maybe you haven't been paying attention, because we have, and we're concerned, right? We're not here because we're greedy employees looking for more money. That's not why we're here. We're not. We're here because the new employees whom we're training and trying to get on board aren't paid enough to live, right? And a year ago, I proffered that there were people, there were members of this board who are worker-friendly, and that there's possibly some workers, some members on this board who aren't as much. I say that still stands. I do. And I would say, I would ask those who are worker-friendly, who do wish to work with us, to speak up, to use your vote, to help us. Because if you look, what we're doing is trying to help the county. We're trying to help you make good decisions. We haven't had a budget that's been balanced for how long? And we've been in deficit. We've been in sort of turmoil, right? Maybe that's because the people who are in charge of the budget don't know how to do their job. Maybe we look at that. Maybe we try to find somebody who can balance a budget, if you can, right? What we ask you is this. When you sit down with us, sit down with us. We care about the county, and we have ideas and thoughts on what we could do to make this work. All we're asking is that you sit at the table with us and not have a lawyer from out of town. Why waste your money on that? You can sit here with us, and you can talk to us directly. I really appreciate your attention and your time. Have a great day.
Thank you so much. Hi. Morning, Alice, again.
I'm back again, apparently. I just realized, you just said that was a year. I, that's, yeah. My name is Alice. I'm an employee with the county. I'm also a union member. I'm here speaking on behalf of my union. I, oh my gosh, I don't even know where to start. First, thank you so much for responding to my last email that I sent after the last meeting I was able to attend. I really do appreciate the understanding that you guys all exhibited, as well as the equity you're trying to infuse into this room. I do appreciate that. I want to circle back to something I mentioned at the last meeting, which is where is the accountability for people in higher positions within the county and where we're at within the budget? I have previously run businesses in my life in private sector. I do understand that you know what your budget looks like as you're moving along. This is not a new thing. So I am curious what the progress in the area of holding folks accountable. And when I mentioned at the last one that you guys are the buck stops here. Board of Supervisors, you do have the department heads reporting to you directly. It's part of the way our county's structured. I am noting that the state and you guys are having a conversation how to restructure it with the CAO, maybe taking on more responsibility, having department heads report. But where's the responsibility in that? Who is taking accountability for where we're at within the budget, which doesn't allow us to take care of the staff that we have? And again, like my predecessor over here mentioned, we have staff members who can't afford to live. They get CalFresh and Medi-Cal because they are so lowly paid that they are eligible to the benefits that they distribute. That's pretty sad. And it's pretty sad that we are, as a county, subsidizing that through federal funding, essentially. So I just ask that you guys really consider holding the folks accountable that are responsible for their budgets, how they do that. And I also ask you guys to look at yourselves and what you guys can carve out, because I'm sure you folks make okay money. And if you can carve out reimbursement or something that you're getting that nobody else within the county as an employee gets, to consider that. Because there's ways that you can save the budget on your own regard. And do your part in that. And it's all public knowledge. People can look this up, what people get reimbursed or what they're paid. And I highly recommend constituents to do so. Again, I do appreciate that you guys listen to us, that you listen to us repeatedly, and give us the respect in this room. And I do appreciate all the respect given to all the speakers today. It was a lot of very heavy, heavy stuff, and I really do appreciate all of that. And I know the hard work you guys are putting in. So thank you.
Thank you, Alice, for saying that. Is there any other items, any other comment on non-agenda items? Last call for non-agenda items? Okay, I'm going to be closing public comment on non-agenda items. If all the kids could come into the room. And thank you to Lieutenant Lu, can you guys say thank you to Lieutenant Taylor? So squeeze in, and right up front, the, right there for Dee, the wheelchair can go right here. Yep, and there's four seats here, and I see other seats. And then you guys can line the walls as you're doing. No, I know you can't go up in there. Nope, they'll, they'll be here. I think they want to be in here. Okay, so our next item is, let me get to it. Redway School, 4th, 6th grade students' presentation to the Board of Supervisor. And I think if, is Dee, where Dee go? Dee, do you want to say something or introduce your speakers? So this is Redway School from the Southern Humboldt area, and this is their 4th through 6th grade. They came on a field trip today, and they're going to tell us about the Southern Humboldt area. And Dee is the, what is your title?
Community Schools Coordinator for Redway Elementary School. And I have a couple of students that are going to talk to you about what they're learning in their class, and then also a couple of students that are going to bring some issues to your attention.
Okay, we could start with our first speaker. So if you can't reach the microphone, you can sit at the table. Can you reach the microphone? So this is actually my grandson, Jackson Harrison. So go ahead, Jackson.
Hi, my name is Jackson Harrison, and I'm 11 years old. I'm concerned with the public availability and the use of nitrous oxide. A lot of people are using it to get high and also draining the user of vitamin B12 and possibly paralyzing themselves. This is also a public safety hazard for all people who use it behind the wheel. And what brought this subject to my attention is I have witnessed this firsthand, and I have family who have become paralyzed from this. Therefore, I'm hoping to ban it for consumer purchase in Humboldt County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker? Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Hayes Houston, and I am vice president for my school. I am talking about the Veterans Building in Southern Humboldt. There are so many reasons why we should build the Vets Building. It's hard for veterans to drive around to places. It's a good place for important resources, food, and honor all of the people with, who fought for our country.
Thank you. Next speaker? Hi, welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Mila Dubey, and I want to bring up feminine products. I think that every school should provide free feminine products in the girls' restrooms. I also find it astonishing that a college can provide free feminine products since adults are much more likely to have money, unlike children. I'm aware that some teachers have feminine products in their classroom that they purchase. However, there are many teachers who do not. Also, I know multiple girls who have started their ladies days earlier than usual, and not many 3rd-grade teachers have feminine products in their classroom. In conclusion, it shouldn't be more expensive to be a girl. I am truly happy I got to speak today, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker? Hi there.
Hello, my name is Canyon. I am here to represent Mr. Garrison's 4th grade class at Redway School. In class, we learned about state history and the Gold Rush. We are learning about fractions. We are excited to learn more about how our community is governed. Governor, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Hi, hello, my name is Elena Clark, and I will be talking about the usage of drugs in our community.
You want to get a little closer to that microphone so we can hear you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
In our community, a large transit of people use drugs, and it can affect many people, such as their family, their friends, and many people around them. It can physically and mentally hurt people around them, and the use of drugs can have a really bad outcome.
Is there, is there more? Are you finished? Yeah? Do you want me to read it for you?
Yeah.
Good job. Yeah, you can. Elena stated that, hello, my name is Elena, and she attends Redway School in the 5th grade. Her classroom is served, serves the 5th and 6th grade classes. Today, she was here to talk about some stresses that are seen in the community, struggles from the large transient population, homeless, and public drug addiction problems. It feels like it's hard to be safe. Drug use can also harm the people that are around them and, and how they act. Physically and mentally, it can hurt the people seeing this. It's worrisome for some of the students to transport their bodies on their bicycles and physically walk through our community when there's a lot of drug and transient activity. Thank you. Is there... Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Roxy Futrell, and I'm the 5th grade class representative. I'm in Ms. Garrison's 5th grade class, and we have just got done learning about the Revolutionary War and how the country started and the Constitution. We are just now learning about Westward Expansion, more specifically Lewis and Clark and Second Jewia's journey across the country.
Thank you. Hi there.
Hello, my name is Marcos Lopez, and I am in the 5th grade at Redway Elementary School. I am here today with my 12 classmates and teacher, Mr. Torres. We are happy to be here today. Thank you for meeting with us. Currently, we are learning about the three branches of government and the US Constitution. We are interested in your work with Potter Valley and water rights related to the Eel River.
Thank you. Hi there.
What would you do to ensure the safety of our old growth redwoods from harvest?
I think we could answer that after all the speakers, or one of us can try to take that on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elena, and my teacher is Ms. Siler. I'm in 6th grade, and we have just finished learning about Rome, and we're currently doing state testing.
Thank you. So thank you to all the speakers. To address some of the speakers, for Jackson's comment on nitrous oxide, I'm going to have Supervisor Wilson is going to say a couple of things because we have a nitrous oxide ordinance that's coming today. And then we're going to go to the Vets Hall, and then we're going to go to the Redwood Trees, and then we're going to go to the Eel River.
All right. A little bit of warning would have been good, but here we are. And honestly, I'm not sure how much I'm allowed to talk about this. Okay. The reason I am not sure about that, just so everyone knows, is because it's something that's on our agenda later. And the public beyond you guys and everybody else has to know what time they need to talk about certain things, so it's fair to everybody that they all come to the same time. So I'm not going to give any details about our nitrous oxide ordinance other than say that we've been working on it for, is it two years? Oh, my goodness. Okay, we've been working on it for two years. It's our, it's our attempt, and we'll see what happens today with the board. But the idea is that it's in a response to the problem that was so eloquently put forward here by the young student, whose name I can't remember because I didn't... Jackson, thank you, Jackson. And it's not just something that's here in, in your community, but it's widespread, it's all over the place. And so I really appreciate you bringing it to us today. And stick around or listen later or read about what happens this afternoon. Thanks.
Thank you. And then to address the comment on the Veterans Hall, right after we talk with you guys today at 11:15, we're going to be addressing the Garberville Veterans Hall. So thank you for your statement. And then I wanted to ask Supervisor Bone, he, there was a comment about the Eel River and the dams, and he was on an ad hoc for a lot of years, working on the Eel River, if he wanted just to say something on that.
Working with other areas, by the way, welcome, kids. It's not, you know, it's good you guys see what goes on in this big, this big building. But there has been an agreement trying to be made for the last century, it seems like, on what we can do with the Eel River water. Now, the Eel River, you guys are right in the middle of it. You guys are extremely affected by it. And what we're trying to do is come up with an MLU where everybody has an agreement that the water that has been being shared is still being shared to a certain level, but the Eel River is still protected and the fish are protected. And so as we move forward and, and do this, there's a lot of interests involved. And the issue is, a lot of the interests are a lot bigger than Humboldt County. So what we try to do is we have people on the board now working on another ad hoc, trying to come to an agreement, and they've come pretty close. I think we might be there. Is it going to make everybody happy? Good government will tell you, if everybody's happy, it's a crappy deal. If there's people upset on both sides, it's probably a better deal. So that means everybody is being affected, but nobody's getting overwhelmed. So, and that's life in general. So as you see, our, our hope here is that Eel River is running in July and August. You guys are swimming, in September, you're swimming, and not having to worry about algae or anything else in your dog's plane at the river. So hopefully, we'll get there.
Thank you. And so there was a comment and question about redwood trees, and I'm going to have Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Madron say something. Supervisor Madron has some redwood trees at his house and has been working to really work on those and, and make them, make his land really pretty. So we'll talk, go to Supervisor Arroyo.
Okay. Who spoke about the old growth redwood trees? Could you raise your hand?
Yep, in the back.
Oh, great. Thank you for bringing that up. So a few things that I wrote down real quick about how you could support Old Growth Redwood Forest. One is supporting state parks and national parks by visiting and by sharing your love of them. And if you can, by donating. Some of the state parks have a small donation fee, and that helps to support them being able to be maintained for other people to enjoy them. And as people appreciate things, they tend to want to conserve them and care about them. So visiting and sharing your love for those places is one thing. California has something called Forest Practice Rules, which mean that timber harvesters have to protect old growth trees and trees that make good habitat, even when they are logging in the area. So that's one thing that we have in California that a lot of other states don't have. And so continuing to support that when you grow up with your votes for people that want to, you know, conserve these special places is one thing that you can do. And know that there's a tool for, for protecting some of those, some of... know that there's a tool for, for protecting some of those, some of those special places. And then lastly, when you learn and share your knowledge about animals and plants that make up the diversity of the redwood forest, you know, that helps other people really appreciate that rare habitat. And I will say, adults can learn from kids just the same way that kids can learn from adults. And sometimes talking about what you love and care about can really touch the hearts of adults in your lives in a way that nothing else can. So, when you share that these things are important to you, it can really make a difference.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Well, great question. And, you know, in Humboldt County, almost all of us have a redwood tree in our yard, right? How many people have a redwood tree in their yard? Look at that, see, right? So, we're all part of this. And while many of these trees might be really young, we can do work in our little forest, whether it's one tree or an acre of trees or 20 acres, we can do work to try and thin it out, limit it up, and help move it back towards old growth. So, we're trying to grow old growth trees. It takes several hundred years to get there, but we're all part of this effort to try and protect our trees, but also be able to use them appropriately for lumber and things like that. So, a lot of the work that's happening today in protecting old growth is happening with private landowners, including some of our timber companies and other things. So, you're all part of this effort to restore our old growth forests. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, I want to address the young lady that spoke about women's issues. Thank you. I was not as brave as you were when I was your age and I was a young girl like you and had those concerns and I know that we advocate for the equality of those items that you spoke about. And I just want to say how brave for you to speak in this room, full of your classmates and to say those things and appreciate it so much. So, this is a form of government for Humboldt County. Each one of us are supervisors in districts that you live in. I am your supervisor in your district and your parent's supervisor. And so, we're going to explain a little bit, starting with our county council, what we do. But first of all, I do have to recognize that my sister-in-law is in the room and my daughter-in-law and my nieces and nephews and my grandson. Just because I live in this district, I also, I'm born and raised there and so my family is very deep down there and I'm so happy to see my family here in this room. So, we're going to start with county council.
Thank you, Judge Bushnell. My name is Scott Miles and I'm currently the interim county council. The office of county council provides legal advice to the board of supervisors and various other county departments, agencies, boards, commissions, and special districts.
Sorry, next we're going to go, thank you, Scott. Next, we're going to go to our CAO and she's going to explain what a CAO is.
Good morning. Good morning. Great to see you all here this morning. I'm the county administrative officer, so in terms you all might understand, I kind of act like the CEO of the organization. I work closely with the board of supervisors to implement their legislative policies and I provide department head support to my teams, which manage the budget and our information technology infrastructure, purchasing department, Americans with Disability Acts, and then I, and economic development. I also provide general supervision and oversight of the, the whole organization and particularly through the budget, which is almost a little over a half billion dollar budget.
Can you tell the students with that budget how we affect the area of Southern Humboldt, DHHS and sheriff? So, she, she has the purse strings of the budget and in your community, you will see the sheriff's department, which, as she will talk a little bit about how we, you might not see county government and you might not think you see county government in your district, but you do.
Yeah, so the county is broke down into five different districts, spanning from Willow Creek all the way down to Humboldt, or excuse me, to Southern Humboldt. And it's, we have a very large community here. And as you all know, it's not always easy to get up to Eureka where the city seat is. So, there are services down there, such as the sheriff's substation and Health and Human Services. There was a point, there was a point in time where planning and building had an office down there so folks could easily access those services and get the support of the county. And likewise, up in, in Willow Creek, we, we try to get those out to the, the far reaches so that accessing county services is equitable and as easy as possible for, for all of our residents.
Another thing is every road you drive on in Southern Humboldt is a county road and so money's from the budget, go to the county roads. I get a lot of complaints about our potholes, so I'm sure that you guys have bumped over those things. So, next, we're going to go to Supervisor Arroyo and she's going to tell us what district she is and what she does in her district.
Great. So, I represent District 4, which is made up of most of the city of Eureka and then some of the Samoa Peninsula, out where the beaches are, the southern portion of the Samoa Peninsula. If you've visited beaches out there, like the Coast Guard Beach or the North Jedy, that's my district. And I have a really geographically small district, so it looks small on the map, but there's a lot of people that live there. It's more densely populated. And you're sitting in my district right now, so welcome. And I, I used to live in, in Petrolia, so I spent time coming to Redway all the time when I lived out there and doing my shopping and visiting with people. So, your town is near and dear to my heart and, and I helped write the grant for the mural at your school that has the redwood forest. That was several years ago, but it was a delight, so I have, yeah, I have a special connection to your school. I also wanted to take a moment to thank you for talking about feminine hygiene project, products. Is that something that I think doesn't get talked about enough? So, I think that's really awesome that you talked about it. We definitely need to make sure that those products are available to everyone who needs them. And I wanted to note that another kind of cool thing about California is we stopped taxing hygiene products in 2020. And so, now at least we don't have to pay a special tax on those as though they're like optional because we know that those are necessary items. So, thank you for bringing that up and I, I know that your school, you know, leaders and adults heard that too, so I think that's really cool that you talked about it.
So, next, we're going to go to Supervisor Wilson and he's going to tell us about his district.
Hello, my name is Mike and Supervisor Wilson, I am the 3rd district, which is Arcata, if you've ever been there. And it's the north bay part of, of Humboldt County, but it also extends along the ridge line all the way almost down to Fortuna. So, while most of the folks in my district live mostly around Arcata, it can take an hour to just drive even to the farthest end, but it's not even close to the biggest district that we've got. Every district we have is divided by five. Every county, in almost every county in the state of California has five supervisors and they divide the population up evenly. And so, each one of us has about the same population that we represent. Let's see. You know, I grew up in Garberville, actually. I'm a, I'm a South Fork attendee. I didn't graduate, but, but nonetheless, I have spent many, much, much of my youth in that, in that space and I know Redway very well. I was just there last week. So, excited to have you guys here. Amazing that you're coming to this place to have a, have a tour and, and, and learn about local government. I think that's amazing. I think a lot of, and you guys were learning about the Constitution and, and sort of the federal end of, of governance, all the biggest decisions are made at the local level. So, and what I mean by that is like, this is where it happens, both for cities and counties and you're really in the thick of it. And so, thanks a lot for, for putting the time in, coming all the way up here. I know you guys are going to go to the courts next. That's a lot. Hopefully, your next field trip is like maybe the zoo or something, so. But, this is good. This is great. I mean, I'm really, really impressed and you guys are in, in for a treat upstairs and I'm, I'm really thankful you guys are here. Thanks.
So, I, I think they're going to go to the park too, after for lunch, so they'll be able to see that, redwood trees. So, I'm Michelle Bushnell, I'm the 2nd district supervisor. I have the second largest district in Humboldt County. I was born and raised in Southern Humboldt, attended Redway School and graduated from South Fork High School, own a couple businesses down there and decided that I'd throw my hat in this ring. And so, this is my, I'm on my second term, my 5th year. I, I love Humboldt County. I especially love Southern Humboldt, where you all are from, and I help constituents down there with issues that come up, also legislative items for the county to help try to fix our roads, get more sheriffs down there, get better DHHS services down there, get better phone lines, all of those things we all do up here, but I do that for the Southern Humboldt district. As well as take on items that, that like are coming up about the vets hall, which we all talk about. So, while that's in my district, it's up to this board entirely, not myself. And so, we govern as one of five, meaning we all are one up here when we make decisions. And then I work individually in my district for people if they have items or, or needs and try to help connect people. And so, I'm so thrilled that you guys are here. I especially want to say thank you to Dee and I want you guys to say thank you to Dee for getting this organized. This is the first time Redway School has ever been up here to the courthouse and to the board of supervisors. And so, I really appreciate that. Let's give Dee a hand. You guys have a very, very special person in Dee that works for your school and interacts and gets you guys out into the world. I do hope that you enjoy your day upstairs at the courts and then out at the park. And so, next, we're going to go to the largest district, which is Supervisor Madron.
Oh, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming on up. Yeah, the 5th district is huge. It's pretty much all of Northern Humboldt, so it's all the areas in Humboldt County that are north and east of the Mad River, except for the city of Blue Lake, which is in Mike's district. So, it's a huge district. It goes all the way up the Klamath Trinity River, way up to Orleans, you know, almost up into Siskiyou County, basically. And it goes up the Highway 101 corridor, almost to Klamath County. And there's only one city in all of the 5th district. What is that city? Trinidad, Little Trinidad. I think it's like the 2nd or 3rd incorporated city in the state of California, believe it or not, but it's still only 275 people. The biggest area in my district is McKinneyville. It's the fastest growing community in Humboldt County. A lot of new houses and, and housing have gone into McKinneyville and it's looking at incorporation to see if that makes sense for that community. So, a lot going on in the district, a lot of rivers, a lot of tribes and a huge community and it's really, really good on you all, your teachers and everybody for coming on up here today because you guys are the future leaders of our community. So, thank you for being here and taking part.
Next, we're going to go to Supervisor Bone and he has a pretty large district himself.
I go from wherever you were, you cross the Eel River down there, just past Weot. So, I've got everything there. Don't have Fortuna, but, or Riadale, but I have Scotia, Fields Landing, Kingsham. And I go all the way to the middle of basically Henderson Street. So, I've got a quite area, Cutten Pine Hill, Kingsham, Fields Landing, all of those places. I've been on the board for a while. It is a remarkable place we live and all the things you brought up today are very important products. But the one I, I mentioned is when they talked about what drugs are doing to your community, that's your toughest lesson right there. Remember, don't let that become you. Be bigger than that, be better than that. And if you see somebody succumbing to it, help them because that's all they need is help and a little thing. That's not the way to go. And that will make a lot of difference in both our DHHS, our sheriffs, and your quality of life. So, as Southern Humboldt moves forward, I've got a little bit of Southern Humboldt because I go all the way out to Petrolia and Honeydew, but not as much as Supervisor Bushnell, obviously. But, good for you kids to be here today.
Thank you. And then behind the screens here, so while we're up here working, we have to have somebody that organizes the meetings and streams it. So, we have Kaylee, if she wants to stand up. This is Kaylee and we're going to go out to public comment in a minute and she's the one that runs up, so she's going to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Kaylee. I'm the deputy clerk of the board. I maintain official records, prepare the agendas and minutes, which are called action summaries, and I ensure that public notices are on time.
Thank you, Kaylee. And then Eric over here from Access Humboldt, he's doing all the monitors and then it goes out on the TV and he does a lot. We can't have this meeting without Access Humboldt and we're very grateful for them. So, now, at the end of this process, we are going to go out to public comment, which Kaylee will do, and we're going to go to the Zoom first.
There is none on Zoom, Chair.
Sometimes we get people that call in as from the Southern Humboldt area because it's so far away. We have what we call remote access, so people can call in and make public comment. And so, once we decide that we don't have anybody on public comment on Zoom, we're going to go to public comment in the room. And if anybody wants to make public comment in the room about this item, they can. Does any of the parents want to come forward and say something? And that's okay if you don't. So, we're going to close public comment and then I'm going to bring this item back to my board to get a motion to accept this presentation.
I'll move that we accept this presentation with glee.
And I'm going to second and then Kaylee is going to do her magic. And you're going to see something up on the board here.
Motion carries 5-0.
So, that means that we are all five so happy that you guys came today. And so, this item is over and we're going to take a break so that you guys can leave. But I really want to thank all the parents that came and the school and all the students. Thank you so much and we're so happy to have you. And I am amazed at, at your letters and how good they were and how real, reality to the Humboldt, Southern Humboldt area that you guys really concentrated on. So, thank you so much. We're going to take a 10-minute break and be back here at 11:20. And we will go right into the Southern Humboldt Vets Hall agenda item. So, we'll be in recess until 11:20. Back from our recess, it is 11:20 something. And so, we're going to go on to our next time, time set, which is 11:15, bid award for the John Haynes Veteran Memorial Building Project. This is coming to us from Director Mattson from Public Works. Director Mattson?
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Bushnell, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works.
Yeah, can we ask him to move, just to move away from the door? Thank you, Juan. We're just going to ask him to quiet down just a little bit out there.
Good luck with that.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
The subject of this meeting, this, this item, this meeting this morning is the Garberville Vets Better Building. We are recommending that we go to bid on this. We think we've got a really good project that was put together. I'm not going to go over the board order specifically. It's pretty self-evident, everything that we've got going into this, but I do want to note a couple of facts about this project. The property is deeded to the county to be used as a veterans' building. John Haynes' mother donated it to the, with the explicit purpose attached to the county for a veterans' building. Since the board initially directed us to start looking at the project, the adoption of the master plan in 2020, we have spent a lot of money investing in the demolition, design, and project management. The opportunity cost versus other projects are potentially even greater. Due to intensive project management on the part of my staff, working very closely with the veterans, we have reduced the cost of this from our last presentation by about a million dollars, which is a 17% reduction. We know in the building trade, as with the roadwork trade, that costs only go up. We are ready to, to build this facility and we are recommending that you approve this so we can move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify with council and CAO, there has been a lot of conversation out there that this is a four-fifths requirement, but this item itself, I believe, is a majority and then the budgetary item would be a four-fifths. Can you correct me?
That is correct, as will any change orders that might come about regarding this project.
Okay. And then, so any questions from my board? Supervisor Wilson?
Wait, so when you say change, change orders are four-fifths votes?
Change orders that come before your board are a four-fifth, but it's, Public Works has some authority.
We have a contingency.
Okay, great, I appreciate that.
Supervisor Arroyo?
With respect to the change order and the contingency, I mean, I will, I will express concern that the project, you know, because construction costs continue to be very dynamic right now, I am concerned about expressing to the winning bidder that, that 10% contingency is, is our sole contingency. Do you feel that that's, can be adequately expressed? Is that pretty common? What are, what are your thoughts around how to ensure that we are holding the line on the costs as bid plus the contingency?
The contingency is pretty standard that we put in there. We generally have been under contingency in all of our projects because we do have We generally have been under contingency in all of our projects, because we do have tight project management. But if there is a true change order that is necessary, that is over the contingency, it would behoove us to bring it to the board and get it done, because it would be inappropriate to leave a half-built building if there's a really main cause for that. But again, it is very rare that we go over our contingencies.
So I have a question. So the bid just was accepted, or will be accepted, but it was just done last month, is that correct?
Correct.
So the contractor knows what prices are currently, and if this goes forward, we anticipate breaking ground soon, is that correct?
Correct.
So the, you know, given the fact that he just bid it, knowing today's prices, and he bid it at the amount that he did, I think that they're well aware of what costs are right now and submitted that bid, knowing what current costs are. So I concur with Director Mattson that I don't anticipate that it would go over the 10%, unless something astronomical came up. But as far as increased costs, I think they are already aware of that. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Bone?
And the issue I'll have is a lot of our contractors seem to use that 10% contingency every time, percentage-wise. And I just think, you know, 10% is a big number. And then they win a bid, and then they get that 10%. And I'm just, I'm just saying, we need to, if costs are set, they're going to order the materials, everything, and hopefully the contractor's anticipated price increases. He's gone to his supplier and says, what do you expect? And I know the market can change and everything like that. But I'm just saying, I would like to think that we can hold the, hold the toe on this and have it, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, it's needed, it is our responsibility, but just that 10% always scares me. And they're coming into a facility, I know when you're going into raw land and you don't know what the structure's going to support and everything else, this has already supported a building for so many years. So the engineering and excavation and everything else should be at a limited basis, so...
Correct. And you already invested in the demolition of the building, and that's when you run into scary things like asbestos and lead that can change costs drastically. You know, the contract is unit bid prices. He cannot change his unit bid prices, even if it costs him more to buy a piece of wood. He already bid a unit bid cost, and that's what he will be paid on.
Okay. I'm going to ask another question. So we currently are out around, I think it's like $680,000 that we've already done on this project, which is construction, demolition of the project, architectural design, and staff time, is that correct?
Correct.
And then I was curious, say that we don't, that this board doesn't go forward, what happens with that property? And there was a building on there previously, and I know in the contract it says that it will be returned. Are we liable for putting a structure on there to return it to the family? What does that look like?
That I do not know, other than the fact that it was donated specifically and accepted specifically for a vets' facility. So we cannot put anything on that property except a vets' building, but I'm not into the details of the original contract.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, you know, I'm, I know this is a lot of money, and given our budget, budgetary constraints that we are going into, I understand people's concerns. However, I'm adamant that we, you know, are responsible for some of the, most of what happened to the vets' building with deferred maintenance. And at that time, there wasn't the money, and I understand that. We have promised them for 10 years, 10 years it's been going on, that we're going to do something, we're going to either fix that building, or we're going to build a new building. They came, they wanted their original building fixed, and I was one of the proponents that said, listen, and with you and your staff saying this building isn't fixable to the tune of, it was going to just be a ton of money. And so I'm, I'm just hopeful that my board will recognize that. I know that the budgetary issues are high on people's minds and that we have concerns about that. But this community deserves this, these veterans deserve this, and it's not just a veterans' hall, it's a community center for so many things in Southern Humboldt. Southern Humboldt is going through a downward turn, and we're hopeful that with just some adjustments down there, that we can rebuild that community, and it really can be centered around the veterans' hall. And so I know Supervisor Wilson had a process question.
Yeah, was that the entirety of the staff report for this? Are we, was there, we have some items within the, within the staff report that shows the renderings and those sorts of things? Is that part of, or was this just, we're just, I know it was all attached, but I was wondering if there was a more public discussion about that? Or are we just diving in right now to our discussion and questions? I just, it just seemed like what's happening here?
Well, generally, an item like this would actually be on consent. And then there would be no discussion, it would be either approved or disapproved. So I didn't, I didn't prepare an in-depth report, because the board report is self-stating everything about the building, including the renderings, all the soft costs that are going to be attached to it as we move it forward, including construction management. It's, it's a really standard, straightforward bid award. We either award it, or we don't.
And then I do want to thank Sean Meehan. He's not with the county any longer, but he worked with the vets. Every other month, came down and worked with them and listened to them, and we got to a point where, you know, there was some things that were wanted, but it, cost-wise, it just wasn't going to work. And so, you know, we had to say, no, this is, this is it, basically. Sean was really great, and I know he enjoyed your guys' dinners and the conversations that he had with you guys, and really worked with you guys. Before he left, I spoke with him, and he is going to follow the process and intends to come up and be there when hopefully this building is done. And he thanks you guys for your time so much, and you helped him in his process. And so I just wanted to pass that on. And so if there are no other questions, I'm going to go to public comment after Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I'm, you know, in May of 2016, we shut this building down. And June, it was 2012 or 13, we came and we said, hey, we need to fix the mold issue. And at the time, it was $1 million. Then we got more mold, and I was down there and saw the buckets of water over in the corner and things like that. And so I find myself now cringing at what the costs have increased, and we're really good at increasing our costs by not getting it done. So here we sit, 12, 13, 14 years later, and I remember Estelle saying the same thing, this needs to be done, this needs to be get done, this needs to get done. And then we fast forward, and we're still in that position. And, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to hold my nose and say, damn, I don't want to spend this much money. But I'm also going to say, it needs to get done, because we can't kick this can down any farther. And in, in relationship in the 1950s, the vets raised the money and tried to buy the property. They were wanting to buy the property, and Mrs. Osgood, is that right? Anyway, the woman who donated in name of her son decided, she says she would not take any money for it, she would donate it in the name of her son. And then we went farther. And then the veterans, at one time, spent $8,000 on the roof, and we reimbursed them over a two-year period. And then we wanted to go back in and further that fix, and it just never got done. And, you know, I, I know we're in constraints, I know we don't have the money, I'm aware of that. But the fact that we're financially responsible, I feel the burden here, because I was here then, of being morally responsible to rebuild it. And I would have much rather it been rebuilt in place without the, all the, you know, tearing down and everything else. But out of this, we'll get a better building. And, you know, we sit here in the letters, you know, we got the form letters from everybody and stuff, and it, it takes the veterans' center almost into the point of it's more of a community center. But that's what we do in our rural areas. I've got people from Honeydew and Petroy that go there. And it, and I think we use it for a vote, we used to use it as a voting station, we used to use it as a, as a response area for emergencies, fire, you know, fire emergencies and things like that. So we have to look at this. We're doing the same thing in Ferndale, and we use that as a voting center and other things. So I, I appreciate you guys being here, and some of you guys have been coming here for 10, 12 years, 14 years. So I appreciate that and your commitment to the veterans. But I just want you to know where I stood before all the talk.
Thank you. I did want to say also that when I was first elected, and Estelle did work on this and try to get some movement, and, you know, she was passionate about it as well. When I first got elected, the first year I was elected, which is five years ago now, we met down at the hall with a bunch of you, and Hank and a bunch of people, and I think Sean was there. And you said, and said, let us do it, we'll fix it, we can do this, just let us do it. And county, because it's county property, we can't do that, or we can't, you know, we can't have people working on their own buildings. And I know Jim Truitt in the back said, we can get this done, and we can get it done, and utilize this hall, and fix the roof, and fix the walls, and fix all this and that. And so they had, you guys had that idea and wanted to do that, and not have your building tore down. In fact, it was exact opposite, you didn't want that building torn down. You wanted, wanted the original building fixed and repaired. And I just want to recognize that in this room, that, you know, the old barn buildings that people used to do, that's what you wanted to do. We'll get a group of people together in the Southern Humboldt community, and we'll fix this. And we prevented that, the county prevented that. So I just really wanted to say that. And before we go to public comment, I think Supervisor Royall has one last thing.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing what folks have to say. I mean, I'm, I'm the only veteran on this board. I'm the only veteran, I think, that's been on this board in a really long time. And I'm still in service as a military officer after a nine-year enlisted career. So, you know, I just want to say a couple of things about that before we go to public comment. You know, one of the reasons I personally serve is, you know, a support of our institutions and a support of free speech. And I also really believe in the role of civic government, and I've signed, you know, I've taken an oath to respect our institutions. And I, you know, I have to jell a lot, being actively serving. I plan to serve well over 20 years. I've, you know, I'm giving an enormous chunk of my life to that public service and this public service. And all of my colleagues here have also committed themselves to public service. And, you know, we have an obligation in that role to assess the costs and analyze expenditures that we make, and this decision is coming at a time when we have some, you all, I think, understand, we have some serious fiscal issues. So I'm supportive, but I got to say, I was really deeply disappointed the last time this came up, the way that people address some of my colleagues. And again, you can have the right to say whatever you want, but it nearly changed my mind on some of the things that, about this project. And, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, what everyone has said, I understand and I agree with about following through on what we have said. But we have to be able to work together on this, you know, on this building, this is, this is going to function as a community center. All of our veterans' halls have that community use element, and we need to be able to have a good relationship between the county and the veterans' groups to be able to facilitate that effective use of this. So I just wanted to say that before we, you know, kind of go into this conversation. I just don't think having a combative relationship serves us at all. We have this opportunity to, you know, to ensure that our veterans' halls work into the future to serve as community spaces for emergencies, for voting, to uphold the civic process, and to be an integrated part of the community. And, and to that end, to also ensure that people see veterans in the community in a, in a light that they, you know, they want to be part of that community. It's, it's no secret that things have changed for veterans between the times that, you know, many of you in this room served and today. It's a really, it's not an easy time to be in the service right now, I'll be honest. And, you know, I want to see us succeed together, but I just wanted to ask that we be able to have a productive conversation now and into the future. So thank you for coming out today.
Supervisor Wilson?
All right. Since we're going to do these kind of statements off the bat, I'm going to just do mine then. And we'll, that way, no one can assume my thoughts, I'll just put them lame out there. So first and foremost, I want to affirm my support for establishing a dedicated building for our veterans in Garberville. I've been consistent in advocating for a permanent space for veterans, one that honors their service, supports their needs, and provides a place to gather, heal, and build community. I've also been consistent in emphasizing we must leverage outside funding, you know, to responsibly finance this facility, just as we strive to do with all of our other capital projects. And I mean all of them. And this is part of the context that we're in. As someone who's personally benefited from the Garberville Vets Hall, I've been there for concerts, Thanksgiving dinners, and other events as a kid and as a young adult, it's clear to me how vital these spaces are. I have a veterans' hall down the street from my house in Arcata. They're a cornerstone of civic life, understood. And I want to, want to make sure people get that from me. I believe we all agree on that fundamental truth. Veterans deserve a home of their own, a place that is dignified, welcoming, and built to last. So where our paths may differ is how to achieve that goal and balancing cost, timing, risk, and long-term community impact. That's where I want to be really clear. That's where, and I've been consistent about this, isn't, and to be really clear, that here's the, some of the struggles that I have in the current construct. We have a structural budget deficit. We're hitting a wall in two years, and that's, that's in terms of financially in this county. We have, our unions are here asking, you know, asking us to, to support them in their efforts for higher pay and wages and benefits. We have other facilities that we're, we're looking at, and I'll talk about those in a second. We just have limited financing capacity. This is going to be done through financing, through our financing mechanism tool, budget. The more we use of that, the less we can help doing in financing of other projects. And again, this would be the only capital project that we have in the entire county, of entire building, that we would do the whole thing. Every other facility, we are leveraging and requesting funding to get from external sources in order for this to happen. And just even as an example, when we had to do the seismic upgrades for the veterans' hall in Eureka, $10 million came from the federal government. We didn't do that. Now, someone could have said, you have that responsibility and that obligation, and I don't know how we would have done it. I don't know what the fiscal reality of what that would mean, even, you know, how that would, what would that mean for our county today if, if every time we are feeling obligated to provide service to every sector of the community in this, this same way? So I want to have this context about why I have this sort of anxiety around this. We have stagnant revenues. The tax base is, is both from the, from the property tax and the, and the, and the sales tax, not looking good. I mean, there are projections for recession. Those are really, I think, I think those are robust, those, those projections. I think they're, I think we would be unrealistic if we didn't think that that was a real risk. And, and most economists are telling us that that is the most likely scenario. We have escalating construction costs, for sure. With tariffs, we're going to see increased costs associated with materials, and we're going to see disruptions in, in supply chain. That is another risk. I think this 10% contingency, I'm going to be very surprised if we can hold to that 10%, very, very surprised. I have, you know, one of the things you always have to be concerned about with the lowest of the bids is oftentimes the strategy around change orders. And so that may already be embedded, as Supervisor Bone said, may already be embedded in the, in, in what the expectation of the contractor is, not to mention the external forces that we're going to be seeing coming up in the near future around the national economy. This is a very, I want to be really clear, that these are some of the challenges that we're going, that we're talking about, and be realistic. We also don't have the staff to manage this project currently. I mean, and I'll ask, you know, Tom, talk about that. On our agenda was today, in the, in, on the consent, was basically replacing the current project manager person that would help us move this project forward, Sean, with somebody else. And that person, they're, the job that they're coming from is still there, like they're still doing that work too. So now that person's doing the work of five people, right? We're having, we don't have necessarily a staff. So what that means is, what's highly likely to occur is that we're going to have to hire outside consultants to manage this project. That will be hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, to do that, just because of the time that it takes to do that, where that's going to be, the remoteness of the project relative to where we hire folks to do that, all that. So I'm just saying, add that to the list. That is not in this budget necessarily. So I'm just saying, add that to the list. That is not in this budget necessarily, right? So I want to be clear that that is a problem. The other part about this, and I think Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, and I think, and I'll speak to this in terms of like, the options I will put forward, and again, these are just options, is that the ownership model kind of sucks. Like, I mean, when we talk about a place, when we take veterans a place of their own, if we own it, the county owns it, it's not a place owned by the veterans. I mean, and we know, and we are talking very specifically about those limitations today. Across the state of California, there are many veterans halls and facilities that are owned by counties, some by cities. But there's also more than, two dozen, more than 25 veterans' memorial districts, where veterans have taken on the ownership of those, and legion halls even more beyond that, that they have taken on ownership and done it themselves, and done it, managed it themselves. And they do that because they don't want the constraints of the local government having to require them to do ADA, or have, I don't know, contracted work with all the legal stuff that we have to deal with, and all of the other constraints. And then we've had that at the Arcade Vets Hall for sure. There's been, we've had some issues there in terms of like, veterans wanting to do work on the building and the conflicts with our legal obligations around, around what we're supposed to provide and how we're supposed to do that on our buildings. You know, we have, we have an ADA consent decree from the federal government. It's been very, it's been very difficult for us to deal with over the years, just as an example. So I want to also express that, again, context matters. We have a public health lab that we're trying to build. We have, we have two, we have a homeless shelter facilities we're trying to do. We have mental health facilities we're trying to build. All of those, our commitment to each one of those is, each one of those is less than the total commitment that we're talking about today to this one project, because we have sought to leverage external funding to make that happen. So again, the context is very different. There are, across the state of California, and have been successful granting opportunities and monies that have been brought in for facilities. Well, there's, I have a list here, but you can imagine, there, maybe I don't have the list. But anyways, Cayucos is one of them. I know in Redding, there's been facilities there. Hold on a second. Oh, Nevada County received $10 million from the Californian Strategic Growth Council. Del Norte County received $500,000 in federal earmarks. And so I'm just saying, this is like, it's not unusual, and this is just like, in the last few years. What I'm getting at is, like, and I've said this from the start of this process, I voted to move forward this process early on, and I said very clearly, like, I, my support of full funding of this is not there. My support of moving forward with a project is there. But the problem I have is, we're not doing this in the same way we would do any other facility. And again, we can talk about whose fault it is, or this, that, and the other. You know, we could have done the work to seismically retrofit the veterans' hall in the way that it should have been done, but we didn't, and it got shut down after an earthquake. And we had to seek funding to fix and remedy that situation. So here are the two, if this doesn't move forward today, but I kind of think it probably will, but if it doesn't, I want to make sure that on the table, that people understand, I think this, we do got to do something. One, I'm happy to, up to whatever we've invested in, up to $2 million, that's what we have, we would be very fundable as a project. I'm just saying. We have invested money, and we have a shovel-ready project. We have not invested the time to actually seek the money externally to make this happen. And I just think that we should do that, and we should be responsible to the rest of the county, and all of the other voters, and all the other taxpayers, to be as fiscally responsible with this project as we would with any other. That's one option. The other option is really set aside $2 million for the Garberville vets to acquire a property wherever they want, and invest the rest of that money to do that, and create a veterans' memorial district, and have the independence and the place that they really can call their own. I want to say, and I've said this before, I have a little bit of a issue, or a, I mean, a concern, that we're investing in building a new building that's off the main strip of the main street of Garberville. And the reason I have that concern, I would much prefer this to be on the main things, because there's so many vacant buildings on Main Street. The vitality of a small town requires the occupancy of your main commercial area. It's really important. It's a spiral that's really hard to get out of once you have that kind of level of unoccupied buildings. Again, I think, from my perspective, having occupancy, either a long-term lease or ownership of one of those structures on Main Street, whether it's the old B of A building, or the old Blue Room space, which by the way, has the ability to generate income for the vets, or any other location, actually fits well with our goal of the Complete Streets Project. We've been talking about funding or looking for funds, again, $10 million, we've earmarked to do the Complete Streets Project for this downtown Garberville. It's important for Complete Streets to have occupied storefronts on your, it's just, it's just so important. And so for me, the idea of investing in new construction off the Main Street at a time when there's so many unoccupied structures, even to build a new structure on Main Street would be the way, where I think, you need, we all need vitality in our downtowns, and it's super important. Those are my thoughts on it. So I just want to get them out there and just let you know that, and again, I want to see something built. I want to see something that is viable, independent, and supportive of good civic engagement in the community, and most of all, supports and honors the veterans of that community. And again, we may disagree on that strategy, and we may disagree in sort of the way and the context of all these different situations, but I want to just really be really clear that something needs to happen, and I want to make sure that there's an understanding that I'm not misunderstood in how, in my thoughts on that. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go out to Zoom, and we're going to start, or public comment, and we're going to start on the Zoom, please.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 2627. I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. You can try to press star six if it's not unmuting. We'll come back to you. Caller 0150, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Alicia, can you try to call?
Hello, this is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. I have had many experiences when the vet's hall was open, and it is a critical opportunity for our community. So I agree with the idea of the vets having a building that they can say, "Is there a building?" I also agree that we need to have a building, particularly every place, but especially in Southern Humboldt, where people can come together. Right now, we really don't have a place that is generally an open forum for people to come together. I was, I participated at Thanksgiving dinners. I participated in the homeless shelter when we had it there. I participated in a court when it was there. Lots of things. We need a building like that, that the county building that's saying, "Let's really be a county. Let's really be a community." Right now, there's all this question about, "What do we do, and who wants to do what in Garberville?" But we need a community. We need it back. We were a big part of the development of Humboldt County with the money that was coming in, whether it was legal or not legal, whether I was here or not, which I wasn't. But Humboldt County was built a lot with the money from Garberville. It's fair for Garberville to have, yes, a vet's community, yes, a building, that's a community building. It's fair. We've paid our dues. The people before me paid their dues. And our community needs it. It's really nice that you're doing grants here and there, but it needs to be concrete. It needs to be something forever. Please, 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 get a building right now for the vets. And please, 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 have a building that really is a county building that will embrace people, so we really have a community. And right now, we don't have a community. Right now, it is sad. It is terrible. People are being horrible. I had a 21-year-old kid pull a gun on a 50-year-old man who had a stroke the other day, and there was no support for it. There was nothing that was, you know, done. They just said, when I talked to the sheriff, they said, "Are you, did you grow up here?" Well, that's kind of what some people do. There's more to the story than that, and the sheriff did explain some of the guidelines. We need a community. We need to collaborate, and we deserve it. And please, please do something about this, and please do it right now, because property values are low, and there's lots to be had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller 2223, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. This is Craig Johnson, longtime Humboldt County resident. And I'm not personally a veteran. My father was, was in the Navy. And my grandfather fought the Russians in the Winter War in Finland. And that's where actually my dad sailed to meet my mother. So little background on my heritage and history. I feel this building is important. I like everything that Supervisor Wilson just brought forward. And I'm a little baffled why this wasn't brought ahead when we weren't in this huge distress. Those were really good ideas, and I don't know if they're possible to take over something like the Blue Room or one of our existing buildings. But again, how long do we have to wait to make that happen? I think it's really important. We move with lightning speed for the sake of our veterans that are in the room, for George Mullins. My daughter just did a high school trip to Normandy. It was really an emotional spot. Like, these men and these women that have fought for our country need this space really, really desperately. And our Southern Humboldt community really does too. And I really resonated with what the last caller said. Like, the previous industry that we had in the Southern Humboldt area built a lot of our community. And now, we've given that money to the county. And now, we need that, those funds utilized. And we might need to get really creative. I understand budgets. I understand postponing. But we really have to put the rubber to the road and make this happen at some capacity in some building in Southern Humboldt. And I really think that going through the county is definitely adding a lot of cost. But our hands are tied, from what I understand. I'd like to know more about this project, and how we can move it and streamline it and make it happen sooner than later. We owe it to these people in this room. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Caller 7108, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes. This is Bonnie Blackberry from Southern Humboldt. And I just wanted to start off and say the correct name for the hall is the John Hay Memorial Vet's Hall. So anyway, I just thought that that's important, because it's a memorial to John Hay. And back when the board voted to tear the building down, the vets and the community wanted to save that building and do whatever was needed to deal with the mold and stuff, etc. Buildings in Garberville that have had mold, and they didn't tear them down. They're just dealing with it. So in this process, somebody's met with the vets, but there hasn't, that I know of, any opportunity for this community to meet with the vets and the planners and whoever came up with this. But we left our vet's hall in our courthouse. And now, it's the whole money thing. And as the previous person said something about, all the money that came out of Southern Humboldt that went into the general fund, and then it's like, we need it here for our veterans' buildings. And we're out of money. It's a really tough situation. And the information about the building, there was a couple renderings on the outside, one on the inside. I didn't see anything about bathroom or kitchen. It was like, pretty vague. And I was hoping in the future that it would open it up more for the community to be involved, along with the vets. I mean, it's been a big asset to the whole community when it was operating. So I feel like, and now that it's torn down, it's given, you know, the MC lock back to the vets. It's like, I know, like, you broke it. You have to fix it. So I'd like that to happen.
Thank you. Your time ran out. I'm going to move to the next caller, 2627. I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. You can try to press star six. If it doesn't work, this is our second time coming to you. Okay, on to the next caller. Caller 5144, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. Caller 5144, I have unmuted you, and you can press star six.
Go to the next.
Okay. Hi, my name is Douglas First. I'm calling from Lakewood. So the hall, as I've been referenced, is more than a place where vets get together to play knuckle. It has served a vital function as far as our civic life here in Southern Humboldt in 40 years, or 55 years that I've lived here. And I want to, there's been references to its uses. I want to specify some of its uses. One of the things I feel about the hall is that it kind of fits a Goldilocks size. One of the things I feel about the hall is that it kind of fits a Goldilocks size or immediate. Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. So, it was not too big and not too small. It was a place for intimate gathering of 100, but it would hold 154 public meetings. So, we did that. We had candidates. When the candidates got elected, they came back to the hall and had public meetings from their positions, these supervisors, these state representatives. We had all sorts of public meetings there. Meetings about self-government, meetings about homelessness, meetings about the health delivery system, meetings about community safety. We had trainings there. And in addition to that, there was a whole bunch of social functions. The hall was in a place for nonprofits to have boogies, musical concerts, etc. It was an active part of our cultural and our civic life. So, scoping sessions, scoping sessions from BLM. We had wild land management conversations. We had community charrettes there. It just served all sorts of functions. And I think that one of the things that characterized this democracy as much as voting is civic participation. And the hall was that. It was the center for civic participation in Garberville. Nothing like that exists at this point. And I'm not sure how the board is going to finesse the finances, but I think it's essential that in order to recover our civic life here in Garberville, as well as part of our cultural experience, that the hall be reconstructed. And I'm not opposed to another location, but I think that the existing law would be preferable. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 3751, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good afternoon, or good morning, my supervisors. I'm glad you're there for us. My name's Bruce Champy. I'm a veteran. I've lived in Southern Humboldt since I got out of the service in Vietnam. My grandfather had property in Alderpoint, so I just, I was pretty overwhelmed and I just moved up here to get a place of my own and figure my life out again. And I think I've been able to, because I've been a good community supporter, I've been instrumental in the material and a good friendly face around this community and trying to be a good representative of the American way of life. I'm getting a little overwhelmed. But I'm glad to speak for a minute. We need this community center here. We represent you down here. We're the local government, which you're trying so hard to do up there. Support us so that we can have a facility and we can gather as soon as possible. Please don't wait to do something else. That's gone by. We need this now. I don't know how hard it is to manage for you. Write the checks. I don't know what the difficulty is. We seem to have it in place. Please. I support this very much. Thanks for being there today and coming to work for us. Bye.
Thank you. That's all on Zoom, Chair. Caller 2627, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Hello? Hi. Are you guys hearing me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Rebecca Crossland. I am the Executive Director of the Healy Senior Center in Redway, the current home of our vets, which we love them, but they definitely deserve a home of their own. I'd like to first thank Supervisor Royal for putting out there that we should all be working this together instead of going against each other. I'd also like to address Supervisor Wilson. And I don't know if you've been down to Garberville lately, however, I know that that spot is often the main venue, mean, you know, but however, it's also right there, like right down the street from the farmer's market, right behind the Humboldt House. This morning, the little bit food shop that is moving into that corner lot right there, that used to be the car spot. So, I don't think it's that far off of the main drag. I'd like to say that I think it's time for the county to work as a whole instead of seeing us as parts. Garberville is the gateway to Humboldt County, and currently, we have no community hub. The Vet Hall was that place for us. My children took ballet and dance. There's art exhibits there. We've all enjoyed community meals there. It is a meeting place for our entire community. And so, as the gateway to Humboldt County, I think it is in everybody's favor to help Garberville start to thrive again. And I think that voting yes on this is a really good step for that. And it's for our whole county. I truly hope that all the supervisors, both from North and South, really listen to our needs and respect the people of Southern Humboldt and follow through on your commitment. I do understand that each supervisor represents a unique district. However, aren't we all stronger together? And as Garberville is the gateway to Humboldt County in the South, I think it's really important that you look at us as an entire county project. And I really hope that you guys vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll go to public comment in the room. If you want to make public comment on this item, come forward to the podium. Don't all jump at once. Hi, welcome. Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm Lewis Lester. I'm LCSW.
Lewis, can I have you pull that microphone up? Thank you so much.
A little closer, is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I do want to mention before I start that the Vets Hall did provide homeless and mental health, not just the mental health, but just a place for vets to come together and talk was a big part of the healing. But I'm speaking in support of the hall and the importance of it. After retiring as a counselor for the Eureka VA, I worked as a counselor in Garberville for the Redwood Vet Center between 2009 and 2012. During my work in Garberville, in addition to seeing veterans individually, I ran a support group for vets. This was mostly Vietnam veterans, but also a few vets who served in World War II, Afghanistan, and Iraq. As I recall, it was a time when the roof of the old Vets Hall badly needed repairs. This was one of the biggest triggers for veterans. A trigger is a reminder of the trauma which results in re-experiencing the trauma. This was one of the major issues in the group that they talked about at the time, even though it was even before the building was considered closed. It brought up issues of neglect and betrayal, bringing up emotions that triggered many of their traumatic memories. They expressed anxiety about the deteriorating condition of the hall and the roof and the feelings of powerlessness to do anything about it as the county had control. Ultimately, the hall was ruined, but this brought up similar issues related to betrayal and neglect from their military service. As the years went by and the hall was destroyed, there were constant threats to the hall being rebuilt, but during every debate, the promise to rebuild was supposedly kept, only to be threatened to be canceled time and again. This brought up strong feelings of betrayal again. Let's not repeat this trauma. Please don't betray these veterans again. They've experienced enough trauma and betrayal. Thank you. And I have the statement, basically, if I can hand it out.
Yeah, you can hand it down to our council and they'll hand it out to us. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff, come forward.
Thank you, Michelle.
Nice to see you.
It's nice to see you all. And Natalie, thank you. And Mike. And Rex. And Steve, I wish you had commented. I've always treasured your take on everything. And I want to say that it's less important that this be a place for the veterans. We find our places. Everyone does. But it's a chance for the veterans to make themselves useful to the community on a level that most of us cannot do individually. And it's a place where a community can gather in a building that belongs to the community. I think it's important that this be a government-centered effort. And that, as people choose where to go and speak, particularly with their children, as to, "Why are we doing my birthday here?" Pop. And he says, "Because this building belongs to us." And I sort of imagine that conversation drifting into, "Why is this our building?" And Dad saying, or Mom saying, "It's ours because we paid for it." Who are we? All of us. We all paid for it. Well, how did we pay for it? We paid it through taxing ourselves. And we chose a part of that funding to create a building that was in memory of service in general. And we choose the veterans because they gambled an ultimate service. Most of us were drafted in. We had no idea where we were going to wind up. Some of us were in situations of extreme peril. And others were in situations of extreme service. And somehow, there was a milk machine in the clinic where I went to pick up further bandages. And that milk was in a cow in Wisconsin or right here within 10 days. And service people got it to where I could drink it. And that needs to be advertised. We need a flag up there flying that says, "We, the people, did this." Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Hi.
Hey, Michelle.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Marshall Moore. I served for seven years in the Army. So I'll try to make this short and sweet. We, I believe that not only the veterans of Humboldt County, but the community of the Southern Humboldt, of Southern Humboldt, need this building done or, like Supervisor Wilson suggested, a building on the main drag that would suffice, as long as we can get it done in the same amount of time. Because it will stand as an emergency service location for emergency staging, for any emergency situations that will come up, a voting center. And it'd be a great memorial building just to have for the veterans serving, who have served and who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And I implore you guys to move forward with this, because if we defer it any longer, it's only going to get, the cost is only going to increase. Also, it has the ability to be a training center for CPR certifications, any medical certifications, any certifications, really. And we have the possibility of recouping some of these prices if we put it into contracts through fundraising or what have you. So, that is my little piece. Hopefully, it was short and sweet enough. And Supervisor Royal, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Marshall. Hi, Juan. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name's Juan Pablo Cervantes. I'm the Humboldt County Clerk, Recorder, and Register of Voters. I want to begin by expressing my deepest respect for the heartbreaking scenario you all are in. Balancing a severe structural deficit with community expectations and past commitments is a heavy and unenviable position to be in. And my heart's with you on that. While I recognize that the John Haynes Veterans Building, Veterans Memorial Building's primary purpose is not for elections, I'd be remiss not to highlight the critical role it could play as a polling place, meeting the highest standards of accessibility, and serving as a resilient, community-anchored site in the face of increasing natural disasters. It also stands as a tangible expression of government's presence in a region that often travels over an hour to receive the services that many of us can access by a walk. It's in places like this and in projects like this that our social contracts take shape. Hernando Soto, an economist, put it, "The way law stays alive is by remaining in touch with social contracts pieced together among real people on the ground." This building is one of those contracts rooted in history, service, and shared responsibility. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Thomas.
Hello. Thomas Mulder here, speaking as myself, individual. Very passionate, last time I spoke on this item. Some people might have thought I was hostile. I don't bring notes. I speak from the heart. My tone elevates. Some people accuse me of yelling. I could stand up here and yell and scream, say, you know, I got 20 years of volunteerism in there. I never tried to say that I would compare myself to a veteran. I think that's a disgrace to veterans. I heard that last time. And I'll look you right in the eyes and say it's a disgrace. Southern Humboldt, very, very important. You had a room full of young kids. So if you don't support this, you might as well have told every one of those young kids, "We don't care about you." Because after sucking so many millions of dollars out of Southern Humboldt, you owe it to the community. Tell my son right there in the back of the room, "He doesn't mean nothing to you." So, it's important. This is owed to our community. More importantly, it's owed to our vets for the civic duty they fight for, for us to get up here and freedom of speech and make decisions about how money's spent. I know it's tough. Maybe we should have thought about that before we invested a half a million dollars in the top floor when Major S. first came in. There is other money that was just crazy spent. You know, where you go to the building and planning department, there's the elevator that sometimes works. Hey, I'm held to a higher standard because I'm a business, so I have ADA parking in the middle of nowhere. Respect Southern Humboldt. Invest what you promised. Invest what you promised. I know some of you had hesitations, but you keep kicking the can down the road. My son doesn't want to come up here and speak. He says it's embarrassing, the lot that's there. You know? It's frustrating to even make these people have angst that you might not build their building. It should not be a question. I heard staff say, "This is something that's normally on consent." Normally on consent. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Brian. Welcome.
It is emotional for her, this side of the podium. And I hope all the supervisors are having a little bit of breathing to do so that you can be here with me, because I want to talk about something. I was the manager of the Vets Hall for 20 years. I was the chaplain for 20 years. And then I had too much work to do in my own job, so I've been working there. And so, luckily, I put some things down here. So, when the water started coming through the roof, we didn't let the water land on the ground, on the floor of the Assembly Room. We caught it, we put it into a bucket about this big around and about that big high and had a little faucet on the bottom. We took the hose and put it out the window. And I told Estelle, and I sent letters to the company, whatever the hell group it was, that I had to call up here and say, "Hey, it's leaking. You got to do something." And then on and on and on, nothing happened. And then at one point, I had to go to work. And so, I wasn't doing that so much because I was too busy. And then, at one point, it got to be crazy, absolutely crazy. So, a colleague of mine, and we went up to the roof. And there was this wonderful place where there was this And there was this wonderful place where there was this, the roof of the court and the judge's room and the judge's helpers. And it was all paved, I mean, redone. And there was special new breathing things that were up there. It was wonderful. And then there was the rest of the building, which was the veterans' building, part of the building. Nothing been done. Zero. So we put tarps on it and we swept all the leaves off of it. We cut the branches off so there wouldn't be more leaves. And downhill it went. And I told Estelle, who was the supervisor at the time, and that group, you know, it didn't work. And so this is, everybody said it's a place for the community to be, period. And the story, fucking who else? Where else would it be? Nowhere else. The vet, the place in red ways about the size of God. And you know, it costs a lot to rent that place. 27 seconds. Okay, here we go. So it's an emergency place. We got ready so that if somebody had, if there was a big wind or a big earthquake or a big flood or a big, whatever the heck I didn't say, then that would have been the place where people who were going to go to the hospital would have a place to at least be cared for while there was no room over there anymore. And this is how we have been. And this is how we need to be. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Brian. Hi, Shanna. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Shanna Archibald. I've been the Miranda 4-H Community Leader for over a decade in Southern Humboldt. During that time, Miranda 4-H has worked extensively volunteering every Thanksgiving and Christmas in the Vets Hall originally and then at the Matil Community Center to better serve our community and for the youth to learn how to be part of their community. And as part of 4-H membership, they also learn civic ability to participate at a good level and help throughout the county as well as the state and the entire nation. And they learn to be good citizens. And oftentimes, we have veterans come and speak. And many of our 4-H members really have an easier time getting into college because of their community service. During that time, I personally worked at the Vets Hall. I personally peeled over two trash cans of potatoes for the Thanksgiving dinner while the water ran down the wall and into the bucket and out, and while the discussions happened about how to fix the hall. I want to go back to a quick bit of history. John Haynes Memorial Vets Hall was built by the community. I remember as a child, the fundraisers to build that building. The county did not build the original building. The county did not maintain the original building. The county put their courthouse there and then stole that building when they refused to let the vets, who were young enough to actually do the work to fix the building at that time, refuse to let them fix it. If you do not build a Vets Hall here, this lot will sit empty. It will represent the loss of trust that all the veterans and the community will feel in the supervisors and the promises that you guys have made. We are talking over a decade of looking at this empty lot. This is not fair to our veterans. This is not fair to our community. We've talked many times about things that have happened at the Vets Hall. It is less than a block from the hospital. Our hospital is not seismically safe. If we needed an emergency facility right now in an emergency, the Vets Hall, if it was rebuilt and seismically safe, would be a natural place to go, less than a block. You need to rebuild the community's trust in the supervisors. We all know the economy's bad in Southern Humboldt. We all know it's bad in the whole county. But I do like Mr. Wilson's idea of giving the land to the veterans to maintain afterwards. If the county doesn't want to maintain the land and the building, give it back to the vets because it came from them. The building came from them. Restore the trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanna. Hi, Lauren. Welcome.
I'm not here to rant and rave about rebuilding our hall. My name's Lauren Pancoast. I served 20 years in the United States Air Force, flew 200 combat missions in Vietnam. After returning to Garberville, I've been the quartermaster at the Garberville VFW for the past 18 years. Quartermaster runs the finances and provides basically administrative assistance to the post. Ronald Reagan once said, "Some people live an entire lifetime and wonder if they have made a difference in the world." A veteran doesn't have that problem. You know, we're proud. I walk among heroes there in the Garberville VFW, every one of them. One of my greatest heroes that I am honored to call my friend is George Mullins. George landed in Normandy in World War II. Last week, George turned 100 years old. His greatest wish was to celebrate his 100th birthday in the new Vets Hall. That didn't happen. Give us back our Vets Hall. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, Lauren. Hi, Tom. Welcome.
I'm Tom Patilla, past commander of the VFW and the American Legion, Vietnam Vet. I've a 35-year member now. And that hall was my home away from home. I enjoyed going to the meetings and camaraderie. I really liked that. But it's not there now. And I got paperwork in my RV, two cars, all through the house since the building got closed. I want my office back. And I encourage all of you to vote yes. It'd be your money well-spent for the community and for Southern Humboldt and future vets. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, see and none. I'm going to close public comment and we're going to come back to the board. I do want to say that I hear what Supervisor Wilson said. The old bank, the B of A building in Garberville is not available. There is actually something going in there. And the old Blue Room, the county tried to rent that building and it's not ADA compliant. We were going to rent that for workforce development. Tried for a year to get that going and the amount of money that we were going to have to put into that. The vocality wasn't willing to pay for it and the county couldn't rent it because the ADA wasn't compliant. We talked to the veterans, I talked to the veterans prior to this meeting, prior to tearing down that old building, about that, about there are some empty structures in town. What about those? And that wasn't their wishes. They don't want to be thrown in a hole somewhere just because it's empty and available. Prolonging the Veterans Hall, that will happen if we pick a building in town that we don't even know if we can get and it has to be ADA compliant and all the things. Plus, we'd be throwing away $680,000 that we've already spent on trying to get this hall back going. For discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we accept staff recommendations. And I hope that I can get a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. So now that we have a first and a second, we either can have discussion from the board, if there is any, or we can go to a vote. Is there any discussion? Yeah, really.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm sure I have something to say. My goodness. Okay, so I just want to again frame a bit of this. As I said before, there was a couple of comments around, why haven't we heard some of these concepts around some alternatives? I put these out here at previous meetings. So I just want to make sure that people understand this is not the first time talked about these options. And I said clearly back then, we're running into a financial wall. We should be considering some options here and be fiscally responsible around that and also around the planning, around what the trajectory was around the vacancies in downtown Garberville. I will say, I mean, if we're just wanting to be specific and in response to Supervisor Bushnell's comments around taking over a space that we looked to rent but didn't meet ADA, what I said before was, you know, I think putting out a budget of $2 million to procure a building and make it viable, I think would take care of any ADA issues within any structure that is in downtown Garberville. So I think that that's not necessarily the issue. And no one's talking about throwing anybody anywhere. We're talking about creating a place that is viable and makes sense. I want to emphasize, this isn't us writing a check. This is us financing. We're talking about probably around $300,000 a year, maybe $350,000 a year. You can, for, I think, is it, and maybe the CAO can help me with this, is it 20 years or 30 years on this?
Well, we haven't gone out to long-term financing yet, but it would be anticipated at 20 years.
So for 20 years, just putting it out there, that's a good amount of money. I think that's, we're talking, I don't know how much that is a month, but it's a lot. I think it's $5,000 a month? No, no, it's more than that. It's $10,000 a month? Yeah. No, it's more than that. It's $15,000 a month financing. And what that translates to is a few things. I mean, you know, one is, there's a lot of options around that. But then also, in most of the money we spend in this county is on staff. And it's on providing services. And so whatever we finance is something that we have to cut somewhere else. It's somewhere, so when we're talking about our commitments to the past, we're talking about the commitments to the current, we also have to talk about our commitments to the future. So I just want to be just really clear about that. I don't think this vote as proposed by Supervisor Bushnell is not going to pass. But if it doesn't, I'm happy to entertain a discussion about the alternatives as discussed here before. And if it does pass, that's how it goes. And I mean, I don't mean this in a bad way. I mean, what I mean is, we'll move forward. And, you know, sometimes we disagree again on the strategy. But however we get to that place where the veterans and the community of Garberville have a place to be and have the civic infrastructure required, I'm going to be happy about that. I mean, I was just going to say, like, that's going to be a positive thing. I am not going to address some of the comments that were made about what people imagine people's intentions are, what those messages are. But to understand that everybody up here, again, wants the same thing. We just have different strategies on how to get there. We have different viewpoints on how we balance the priorities of all the things that we have to do here. And I'm hoping, in whatever capacity, whatever structure, whatever way this moves forward, that we're able, that the community can leverage that asset as in the best way possible, whether it's through secure voting, whether it's through emergency services, whether it's through, whatever that may be. And I'm hoping and expecting, quite honestly, the capacity of not just the veterans, but their supportive community to help do the work, no matter what building is created. It's going to be, it's going to be work to do that. It's not, it's not going to be a passive engagement by any means. It never was. And so those are my comments. Like I said, I will be voting no on this as proposed, as it is right here. But that doesn't mean that I view that as an indication that I, of not wanting whatever outcome we'll get out of here today.
Supervisor Royal?
Thank you. I appreciate the, I just want to take a moment to express appreciation and some concern. So I'm happy to support this moving forward. And some of the things that got me there, I mean, if this bid had come back more than what we had voted on before, I don't think I'd be in this position because of the fiscal situation we're in and because of our responsibility to all of our community and all the different needs that we have. And I might have been more inclined to support taking a different approach, to still have a Veterans Center, but a Veterans Memorial Hall, excuse me. But because of the work that staff, and you know, huge shout out to our staff, Sean Meehan, who has left the county's employ. But, you know, and working with the folks in the community on ways to curtail these costs and then putting out to bid and getting bids that were more feasible for us at this moment in time. It's still a huge cost. I'm well aware of that. I'm eyes wide open about that. And I think that, you know, we got to a place where we're looking at about a two-thirds, or a little less than two-thirds of the cost of what we were anticipating spending. I really, really, really appreciate that. And I'm really worried about being held over barrel over potential change orders and having a, you know, a building that's 70% done. And now we're like, you know, getting in that hot water again. So I just guess I'm hoping to hear what strategies we might employ to help avoid that issue. I know you said that we rarely go over the 10% contingency. I'm kind of with Supervisor Bone here about thinking that that often just gets eaten up as an expectation. And so what thoughts do you have, Tom, about how to keep that from happening?
By holding the contractor to the contract and not giving him any wiggle room. When something changes and it's appropriate, it changes. We see a lot more changes in roadwork than we do in building work, frankly, because roadwork is dealing with underground that can move, can change, all kinds of different things. Buildings are usually pretty straightforward, especially starting from scratch. If there was an existing building, I'd be a little bit more worried because we have to go in and do asbestos and lead abatements and everything else. And you never know what you're going to hit. It's like digging underground. You don't know what you're going to hit. I am very confident this is going to be a very good project and we will be holding the contractor responsible to his bid.
All right. That makes me feel satisfied at this point. I mean, I hear what you're saying and I'm not trying to in any way demonize the contractor or anything like that. I just, you know, I know that we have tariffs. We have a dynamic situation right now. So I'm really wanting to ensure that we hold them to that. So that's, I, that's the appetite I have for this project right now. And, you know, I think, I've heard all what's been said and I think, you know, some of the same things that came up last time are still in my mind this time. But I'm ready to move forward if folks are ready for the vote.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that came and made comment today and also how respectful everybody was. That was great. And then the public comment on the Zoom as well. I don't take this lightly. I know it's a lot of money. In my current job, I'm fiscally responsible to make the county run as long as, as well as every other person up on this board. And so it is a hard decision. And I understand Supervisor Wilson's thoughts around being fiscally responsible. And as you've heard him say, it's not against the veterans. But I am very, you know, I'm an absolute yes on this project and have been from the very beginning, and I respect your service. I heard Supervisor Wilson say, "We'll pay this debt for 20 years." Lauren, you served 20 years. You've been paying this debt for how long? And so I feel passionate about it. I think he does as well. I just, like he said, we take a different approach. And I want this hall to be on the property that was given and the person that lost their life's name. And I think it's important to you all and it's important to the community. And I just really want to do, once again, say thank you for all the public comment. So Supervisor Bone, and then we'll go for the vote.
I appreciate that everybody showed up. You know, I'm not going to ramble on why I'm doing it. The reason, the reason is, I'm voting for this is because 12 years ago, a million bucks, less than a million bucks would have fixed this. And somewhere out there, somebody's got to look at government, at its whole, and look at all the crap we have to go through to get anything approved and the rigmarole and everything we have to go through. And everything seems to increase. Every week, we get something on here that we've started four years ago and the prices have gone up. And now we're worried about the price going up in six months on this project. We've got to figure out some way to...
We, we've got to figure out some way to streamline this. We, I mean, it doesn't happen a lot of other places, so I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, mainly for the residents down there and the veterans, and, and the idea that we had a shovel-ready project 12 years ago, we needed to go down and fix it, and we didn't. I remember, I remember the bucket and hose out the window. We used to have meetings down, I mean, I must have been down there for four or five meetings before we closed up, and that's not my, even my district, but there was things that went on down there. So I, I haven't changed my position at all, and, and the only thing I'm changing is our financial commitment, I guess.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson has one last comment, and then we're going to go to a vote.
I just wanted to, there was a comment around the renovations on the, I think it was the fourth floor for Measure S. That was for kids. I want to be really clear, that was for kids. And that was part of the district attorney's efforts around, am I right about this?
Yeah, that was for victim witnessed.
Yeah, so that was for kids, for all the kids of Humboldt County. So I just want to be really clear about that, I don't want that project demonized at all. That was for victim protection. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, I think your vote, vote, things are up, if we could see if we get a vote.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I understand your place, I'm not offending you.
I'm not offending you, I hate it all. This is why we have.
Thank you.
So thank you, we are going to go, Tom, thank you for all your work and all your staff's work, and can I ask you one question? When would we anticipate breaking ground?
I, probably in eight days, if I'm not mistaken.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. So now we're going to go into closed session, which is a time set at noon, and County Council will read us into closed session.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee appointment for the position of the Aviation Director. It is also the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D4, in order to discuss the initiation of litigation in one potential case.
Thank you. We will go out to public comment on the Zoom on closed session.
There is none.
Public comment in the room? None? Okay, we're going to adjourn recess, excuse me, recess, and I think we'll be about an hour and a half in closed session, and so if we could do a five-minute break and then go right into closed session, there is lunch provided today. Probably two hours, Eric, two hours, okay. Let's continue.
We can't be dependent on a one-size-fits-all approach in education, you all know that. Our goal is always to meet students where they're at, and then determine what they need, provide the necessary supports and interventions to make sure that they come to a place of academic success, and more importantly, that we prepare them for their preferred future. Our partnerships with tribal communities have enriched their Native American education programs in the county, and then restorative practices have improved school climates, and our mental health collaborative has expanded access to essential, essential counseling So challenges, we have many in education. Despite our successes, we face significant challenges primarily around declining enrollments, and you may be aware that actually since about 1998, Humboldt County has experienced declining enrollment in our schools, and that affects school funding directly because schools are funded primarily on average daily attendance, right? The percentage of students that are attending our schools each day. So we also have issues around staffing shortages, finding a competent teacher workforce, especially in specialized subjects, and this strains our resources. And while we've seen improvements in chronic absenteeism rates, this is a continued problem that we're trying to address. And just to give you an idea of that, the Humboldt County, nearly one in three students in grades, kindergarten through eighth grade, is chronically absent, meaning they miss at least 10% of the school days being offered. A typical school year, that's 18 out of the 180 days that a student misses. So that's, that's significant in terms of impact to learning. Student wellness remains a priority, mental health needs have increased, and while services have expanded, they still fall short of the demand. We appreciate the partnerships with county mental health. Food and housing insecurities exacerbated by threats to federal funding continue to impact students' performance, and inconsistent broadband access hampers both learning and teaching, especially in our more rural districts and charters. So, we're leveraging collective action to innovate. HCOE has strong partnerships with both College of the Redwoods and Cal Poly Humboldt, and through the statewide community schools initiative, we're able to expand school-based wellness centers. The Golden State Pathways Program is aligning career and college readiness, and the Golden State Pathways Program provides local-led education authorities, or LEAs, with the resources to promote pathways in high-wage, high-skill, high-growth areas, including technology, healthcare, education, and climate-related fields. And we're looking to expand our successful residency program to cultivate a robust local teaching workforce. And the residency program enables working professionals to have the opportunity to go into the teaching profession while offsetting the cost for their tuition. To ensure that Humboldt County students are prepared for their preferred future, we must continue to invest in innovation by ensuring that students are not just literate in reading, which is fundamental, but also literate in the skills and competencies necessary for success in a global society. And speaking of a global society, we have a number of global partnerships and a global exchange with educators and students from places such as Taiwan. Now looking ahead, we're committed to investing in our youngest learners through our preschool, special beginnings programs, and we're investing in sustainable transportation options like electric buses that can enhance attendance while also addressing environmental outcomes. And I must say that electric buses don't work so well in rural communities with lots of hills, where it's just the range is just not quite there yet. And finally, education is communal endeavor. We, we appreciate your support in these areas like transportation, broadband, housing, and youth services, because we know that those are vital for student success, and I am confident that together we can continue to ensure that every student in Humboldt County receives an equitable, high-quality education. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and just wanted to give thanks to you again for the opportunity to speak to you about Humboldt County education.
Thanks so much. I'll bring it back to the Board for questions. Supervisor O'Royall? In my call, I just want to say sorry for all the interruptions, and thank you for the presentation.
Of course, no problem at all.
Thank you. May I?
Yeah.
Thank you so much for being here. I wanted to kind of get your take on some of the funding challenges that are coming down as part of, you know, some of the changes happening on the federal level right now, and, and just, you know, find out where we as supporters of education in Humboldt as well can, can kind of partner with you to make, make our needs really clearly known.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, Supervisor O'Royall. I will say that it's a mixed bag right now, and very uncertain times, as you are all aware. Things are changing daily in terms of impacts to our educational system. As far as federal funding goes, most recently, we heard last Friday that there are retractions of federal funding for mental health grants, and I'll give you an example, McKinnonville Union School District had about one, one and a half million dollar grant that is now being cut, and it has, you know, direct impact on students and the supports that they need. I will say that most of our funding, as I mentioned earlier, comes from the state. We, at the county office, get about eight to 10% of our funds from the federal government. So we are buffered somewhat from that, but that doesn't mean that we're, you know, completely immune from it. I am concerned about the ongoing commitment to education, especially for our most vulnerable populations, and, for example, Title I funds that are, come from the, from the federal government, and, you know, they support students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, for example, we have a high percentage of that. So any changes to those funds would, would impact education. The same thing with Head Start programs, right? IDEA, which supports students with disabilities, there's, these are all students that we have in our schools, and we want to make sure that we support them directly. I would say to your point about how we can partner, I think that is just making, making our voices heard as elected officials, making sure that we're making our representatives at both, at both the state level and at the federal level, because, you know, what, what the federal administration may not be able to support us, we need to make sure that our state legislators know what our priorities are, so that they can look at options for serving us as well.
Thank you. Is, are you done? Okay. So it would be helpful if you have an opportunity and you need support from our Board, if you email us, or, because I know federally, things are changing daily, and, and support monies and, and that are pretty back and forth. So if, if you do, or you think of ways that our Board can help you, or individually supervisors, that would be great, to have someone from your offices reach out and say, hey. We all kind of get immersed in our own stuff, and so sometimes we don't see out there the things that need to be done, and just a little cue would bring us right back to, okay, we need to do this, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the, the report and, you know, the connections that are happening throughout the county with education and protecting, you know, our children. So thank you for that. Supervisor Madron, do you have anything?
Just want to, just want to say thank you, Michael. We've had some communications recently about the outdoor school and stuff, and really exciting stuff possibly coming down the line, and I also have really enjoyed seeing a lot of the schools in Humboldt County shift over to a more wholesome food program.
Yes.
Where they have gardens on site, and they're buying their own produce and their own food rather than just relying on the federal subsidy food, which sometimes can be less desirable.
Yeah.
And it, it just has changed the whole arena of food serving at these schools. Trinidad was one of the first to really adopt that 15 years ago or whatever, but that's a really interesting and wonderful aspect, I think, to our local schools, so.
Yeah, I would encourage any of you to come to a local school cafeteria for lunch, because it's, it's changed probably from the days that you and I were in school.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, it's five-star cuisine.
Fish sticks?
Well, maybe organic fish sticks. Yeah.
Redway School has a salad bar. You just don't even see salad bars anymore.
Right.
And then the other thing is road. You mentioned electric vehicles are difficult on the hills, but some of our small schools in the hinterlands, the roads have been falling apart, so I think we're very hopeful that our Measure O will hopefully help turning that around. It won't happen tomorrow, but working, you know, with those communities to try and fix some of these really horrible roads like Stover Ranch Road, where we have the three students, I think you said, at Greenpoint.
That's correct, at Greenpoint.
And I'm sure for some, a lot of parents, the, the road access becomes a factor in deciding where they may or may not put their, their children.
Here's your.
In terms of having reliable access and things like that, so.
Absolutely.
And schools like that, you know, Maple Creek, Greenpoint, Alder Point, these places, I mean, there may be very few students, but they're crucial to those families, as we know. So thank you for the work you try and to do in that area.
And to the community. Castrolin School is a K-12, I think there's 34 students there, and it, but it's the hub of Castrolin and Alder Point that has a post office, and really the school is the hub of that community, and, and so the commitment also that Humboldt Office of Education brings for those small outlying schools is, is just really wonderful to see in a very rural area. So Supervisor Bone, do you have something to add?
Always good to see you, Michael.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great report.
So we're going to go out to public comment, and we'll start on the Zoom first.
There is none, Chair.
Okay, and then public comment in the room. See you in none, we'll bring it back to the Board, and could I get a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks again.
Appreciate it. I am going to head off to an meeting.
Yeah, sorry we were running late.
No problem, appreciate the time.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. We will go on to the next item from the CAO's office, which is our 2:00 PM, we're running really late. Informational County Department reports for fiscal year 2025-2026, and I think this is, is this a public hearing? Attachment at public hearing notice? No.
This should not be a public hearing.
Okay, and this is, Sean, do you want to introduce, or, this is planning and buildings, right?
Sure, yeah, this is just another extension of the meetings that we had yesterday to discuss some of our departmental budgets, and.
We can't, where's our attorney? We can't. There he is, okay, go ahead.
All right, and this is our Director of Planning and Building, John Ford.
Thank you. Hi, John, Director Ford.
Good afternoon, Chair Bushnell, members of the Board. I'm here to present the 2025-2026 proposed budget for the Planning and Building Department. So as the Board is aware, there are four budget units within Planning and Building. The first is building inspection, and while that does fund the building inspection services, it also funds the building plan check and all the permit work that's done in processing those applications. It is also responsible for all of the public interface. The first line of people that the public encounters are the permit techs, and there are two planners embedded within this unit. We also have code enforcement, and that is pretty self-explanatory. The current planning budget is the parent budget unit for everything, and also includes, obviously, the current planning function, which includes the cannabis planning function, and also includes all the administrative staff. Advanced planning or long-range planning includes all the ordinance and policy work that gets done, and also this year will include the Housing and Grants Program, which has always been under 2A2, but as I'll point out in a minute, the organization has changed a little bit. So the, I'm going to address four things. One are the organizational changes we've made, identify some trends that we see, go through the budgets of each of the different units, and then talk a little bit about implications for the coming year. So in 2025-2026, the department is down to 53 positions, and my line of people is right in the way of seeing anything. So the 53, or 53 positions include three vacancies, and to get there, it's a de-allocation of a total of 12 positions. So that is 31 positions that we have de-allocated in the last three years, or a 37% reduction in staffing. This is the org chart, and I'm sorry I could not make it more readable, but in this context, it's, it's hard to get it big enough. So the yellow areas that you see are those that are unfilled right now. The pink are positions that are being de-allocated within this budget unit. There is two really important changes, because we are reducing two management positions, we're eliminating two management positions. The first is within the code enforcement budget, and the code enforcement unit will now be under the chief building official, and there are currently five filled posi, or four filled, one vacant position that we're recruiting for right now that we're recruiting for right now that will be added to that. The reason we can do this is it's not uncommon for the building official to manage the code enforcement unit. The tasks that they have are very similar. It's a matter of implementing codes and identifying that. And secondly, the work within the code enforcement unit has drastically decreased over the last couple of years. The other big change is under long-range planning, we're eliminating the program manager position that was created to manage housing and grants and also the, the budget functions of the department. That position is being de-allocated and the housing and grants is being put under long-range planning. And there is a, a good cross-collaboration there. A lot of the grants that we have, planning grants, require work between the two groups and also just the housing grant funding that we have can be supervised by the, the manager that's there. In the far right column are really are a lot of our administrative functions. We are expecting a retirement soon and once that happens, we'll be making more changes to this organizational chart. So when it comes to trends, one of the things that we saw this year was that the building permit revenue actually was 30% higher than was expected, which we were pretty pleased with. That really is helping us finish off this budget year. The other thing that we're seeing is the planning revenue related particularly to current planning has been down. There's a reduction in the number of applications that we're seeing coming in, coming in. So it makes it difficult to predict the future. The traditional steady permits that we have to process, single-family residences, commercial development or, and cannabis applications over the last several years are, are not there anymore. Those are all in decline and I'll show you the numbers on that in just a moment. But there is a lot of interest in modifying existing residences and modifying existing commercial structures. That's where most of the, the permit activity is related to. And then there is the possibility of several fairly large projects coming in in the near future. So in terms of the overall department's budget, this is the entire department, all four budget units together. We've got a budget of about eight point, little over $8.6 million. About three, little under 3.5 million of that comes from revenues and sources other than the general fund and then 5.2 million of that comes from the general plan, general fund, excuse me. So there's a little star down there indicating that because of the way we do budgeting, all the grant funding is not included within those numbers. So moving into building inspection, this last year, the, we performed almost 7,600 building inspections. We did 940 plan checks, issued 1,617 permits and also administered 106 stop-work orders and substandard housing complaints. Here's the building metrics that I was speaking to a moment ago. You can see on the top line, the single-family residence numbers are, are declining. They probably peaked in about 2022. The same with accessory dwelling units, but residential additions and alterations seem to still be on an upward swing, virtually the same number as last year. New commercial development is obviously way, way off pace. That's a significant downward trend. Commercial remodels, however, are on the upward trend. Mobile homes really aren't a significant source, not a lot of change over the last three years. And then photovoltaic systems, this is in here primarily because we developed a program to issue these electronically. So that's something that happens even on the weekends.
Through the chair. John, does, does residential addition and alteration, does that roofing, roofing permits go underneath that?
Uh, yes.
The, the last thing, the photo.
Photovoltaic.
What is that?
Solar panels.
Okay, solar, okay.
Rex, roofing permits may not go under that, I'm sorry. I, I think that's more where there is a structural permit. So moving into the building division's accomplishments, I'm sorry I couldn't get this text a little bigger, but one of the things the staff has done is reduce the hours at the counter and what that has done is allowed increased productivity, working on permits to actually process permits. The staff also reviewed over 1,200 pre-applications. That was a new process that was initiated this year, where we reviewed not only planning but also building permit applications to make sure they're complete so that when they come in, they're ready to refer out to other agencies and go right into the process. We've increased the number of over-the-counter plan checks. That means it's a same-day permit. We've also designed a digital referral system. We're trying to get away from the use of paper and copying things and then scanning them and sending them so everything comes in digitally, it stays digital and gets referred digitally. And somehow we still end up with overage charges on our copy machine. I don't understand it, but that's a different story. I shouldn't have said that. So in terms of building division goals for the coming year, the, we want to streamline the methods for assigning addresses. That's been something that has, has really was complex and is becoming more simple. It's actually getting done by the GI system itself. We want to get to a place where somebody that has a building permit can apply online for an inspection. They don't have to call in. They can get on the system, identify when they want the inspection and then choose the time and then the system will schedule that. And then we are looking to, because we have to change our computers anyway, is to put laptops in the hands of the building inspectors. What this will do is allow them to have real-time updates and also have access to the plans that are in Excel even while they're out in the field. So conceivably, they could be doing an inspection, clearing something out in the field and at the same time clear something so a building permit could be issued back in the department. So the building division budget has total expenditures of nearly $2.5 million with revenues of just over 1.5. The general fund contribution is $927,316 with 14 filled positions. Moving then into code enforcement, this last year, the accomplishments included 54 notices to abate, 57 notices of violation. Not that that's something to celebrate, but that's something that had to be done. We closed 328 cases. We're also, and have completed now, the process of refining, refining the whole process so that it is more sequential and it can be tracked much, much better. And that will create increased efficiency. The whole team has been re, has been combined into one team for efficiency and then we completed four abatements this last year. The code enforcement budget is $1.5 million approximately and there's not much revenue coming in there that we can anticipate. It could be larger, but that's really what it's been over the last several years. This is all done with five, now five filled positions. This involves de-allocating the code enforcement manager to, and two code compliance officers and we're holding two code compliance positions vacant to see what the overall volume of work is within code enforcement before deciding to fill those. If the trend of re, a reduced number of complaints continued, we don't want to be staffing up for what's a declining workload. So moving into current planning, this last year, 321 permits were processed to decision. 62 of those were denials. We did 921 inspections, compliance inspections. 820 of those were onsite. 53 of those were surface binding inspections. We also inspected the Department of Cannabis Control, or Power and Water Grants and so those were all inspected this last year as well. In current planning, the goals for the coming year are to continue the priority processing of housing, continue to cross-train planners, moving them around from the counter to inspections to the current section where staff reports are written. We want to maintain the annual onsite cannabis and surface binding inspections, but we do want to transition to remote inspections for permits that repeatedly demonstrate that they're fully in compliance. So the budget for 277 and the projected expenditures is just under $3.7 million. Projected revenue is $1.5 million, leaves a general fund contribution of $2.1 million. This is done with 27 filled positions. We're de-allocating seven full-time positions from this budget unit. Brings us to long-range planning. The accomplishments from this last year is the board adopted assign ordinance. We continued to progress on the Regional Climate Action Plan and also the McKinley Villable Town Center ordinance. The board adopted tiny home village ordinance. The board adopted the residential commercial ordinance and we expect the board to adopt the VMT Vehicle Miles Travel Sequel Threshold Guidelines coming forward, maybe in front of the board in June. I'm optimistic. The planning goals for 2A2 is to adopt the McKinley Villable Town Center, adopt the Regional Climate Action Plan, complete the draft of the Humboldt Area Plan and begin the sequel process on that. We're going to need to find grant funding or something to fund the environmental work on that. We're also involved in a resilience study for King Salmon and Fields Landing. That's a grant from the state and that's in partnership with Public Works and also with Cal Poly Humboldt. We want to adopt a noise ordinance in the next year and continue to pursue an increasing number of housing grants and also other grants to support the work that we're doing, both in planning and in code enforcement. So within.
And lighting, lighting's in there too?
Uh, thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Lighting, we expected to have done this year, but if not, it'll be done the first part of next year. It's going to the Planning Commission on May 15th. The budget for 2A2 has, is a little bit more complicated because there's a lot of grants in here and so there's, there's three columns here. One is the, the grant revenues and expenditures, the actual operating costs and then the total costs. So you can see the total cost is about $3.7 million. The, the grant expenditures are about $2.7 million, so the actual operating cost is about Of that, we get about $319,000 from the general plan user fee, which goes up and down based upon the number of permits and value of permits that are applied for or issued. And then the general fund contribution is $679,595. This funds six management positions, two housing specialists and three planners.
John, is this, I'm sorry for interrupting, is this long-range planning?
This is long-range planning.
So this is the, so you get $697 from the general fund?
Right.
And, I mean, we're, we're not able to do as much work as we want because we don't have enough funding in the long-range planning, is that correct?
You, you're on the next slide.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So we, we, we are prioritizing the strategic initiatives, but without having additional funding to get to those at a faster pace, dedicating additional staff or dedicating professional services, professional services to that, we, we really can't go at those at the pace we'd like. Fortunately, the housing element, element compliance is within the strategic initiatives and so that's something that we're also having to put a priority on to satisfy the state who's watching to make sure that we're working on our housing element. And, and so you, you saw the number of people there. We basically have three planners, one manager devoted to doing all the long-range planning work that's, that's involved. I will also, well, I'll leave it there. Then I also want to say something about grant funding, which is that grants, while they're great, you saw that there is a general fund cost to implementing the grants. A lot of the grants don't allow us to charge the full loaded rate of whoever's working on the grant. And so there actually is a residual cost in, in doing those grants, so general fund money is needed for those. We want to continue to seek housing grants to support housing development. We've been pretty successful this year providing money to, to developments that are, are coming to fruition and we're excited about that. We're constantly seeking new grants to support the housing work and the code enforcement work. And one of the things I just want to say in terms of thinking about implications is as we are reducing staff, our flexibility to respond to things decreases because we're one deep in a lot of areas. And so in order to do something else, we have to stop doing what we're doing. And so as we come to this, the last slide, and what we're trying to do, really focusing on doing, is to increase revenue and that comes from grant funding is, is in the third bullet there, but it also comes in making sure that we're appropriately billing for the current planning projects and, and then looking for other ways to work with other agencies and doing things that can pay for the work that we do. We're also looking closely at retirements and people when they resign and we're not refilling positions unless they're an absolute necessity for the department. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I probably went a little bit long.
You were fine. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Madron?
Well, thanks, John. Director Ford, I appreciate all the hard work that your staff do with such limited bodies to do it. It's never easy balancing all that. And yeah, not getting completely reimbursed in grants has always been an issue. I'm surprised they won't fund the full weighted rates. I mean, if those are basically benefits on top of wages, most grants do cover that, but you've got to argue with them often, depends on the grant source, about the eligibility of those additional costs. And sometimes you have to simply slip it into other parts of the budget in creative ways that are legal, but creative. At least that's what we did in the watershed world of grants, but I'm not as familiar with your grant sources and stuff. Couple of things I noticed that weren't on the list were bringing forth all the zoning changes that we passed in 2017 or so. And I believe the next steps were to apply the zoning changes everywhere in the county except for where the community plan updates need to happen. That's the other thing that's not up there and I know in talking with you, that's because you don't have the staff or the money to really do the additional work, but the vast majority of zoning changes are not in those community plan areas. What are you thinking in regards to that? It's been a while.
Yeah, sorry, I debated even as I was going through this before the presentation today whether or not I should add that in. It's, it's, it's on the, the hot list.
Yeah.
The high priority list, but I chose not to put it on there because I didn't want to commit to something I didn't know that we, if we could get it done. I think we can get to it. Whether we get it all the way across the finish line is a different matter. It, it will probably, we'll start working on it this year, undoubtedly, but.
And that's the changes outside of community plan areas.
It's the rezone, the rezoning of property to be consistent with the general plan outside of community plan areas, yep.
Okay, okay. Now I can appreciate that constraint, so thank you for your presentation.
Anyone else? Supervisor Arroyo?
I don't have a question. I just want to applaud the way that you've seized the bull by the horns really with all of the changes that have needed to happen and I, I know it hasn't been easy. It's been a lot of change for your department and, you know, just some acknowledgement of that, that adaptation to the reality of our fiscal constraints, you know, just want to appreciate that. And I, I know that we all ask you for your time and bandwidth to engage in things that are aligned with our strategic priorities but are challenging, so, you know, I, I know that we have to kind of continue to navigate the way that those requests happen and, and recognize our, our limited capacity, but thank you for, for all of this.
Thank you.
So I also want to acknowledge that although it's impacting your department, I, I know that the cuts that you've had to make or holding vacancies does impact the department and also requires more of your staff. You did do exactly what our board asked of you and every department head was to come in, you know, within your budget and to make cuts accordingly. And it's clear that you reorganized your department to fit into those. And it's clear that you reorganized your department to fit into those budget constraints, which also is not ideal, but it is a response to what the board directed you to do. And you wholeheartedly took that on and really succeeded. So I applaud you and your team. I know in the next year, and I think this board recognizes as long as, as well as every other department that presented, that it's going to be challenging to work with little staff. And hopefully, you know, the closed Fridays and the shortened hours can allow for, you know, some of that time that they need to really do that work. Also, you're transitioning to everything online. Once all the kinks get worked out, which are happening, will make that much more efficient for the county and the services that are needed. So I want to commend you and your department for really reorganizing. And you've had some key people leave and are holding some of those positions open, which is also going to be more on your shoulders, but more on your leaders' shoulders too. And so it sounds like you're tucking in and going to be, you know, doing the best you can and requiring what we asked was to come in under budget really. So I want to thank you. So we're going to go out to public comment.
There is none, Chair.
And no public comment, or open public comment in the room. Seeing none, I will take a motion from my board.
Motion to accept the report.
I'll second.
Okay, and thank you, Director Ford.
Was the motion for staff recommendations?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Hold on. There's also a direction on there to publish for the public hearings. So that's just clarifying it wasn't ju-
Those were my words exactly.
Staff, yeah. Thank you.
I'm waiting on two more votes.
Rex? Okay, Natalie, did you, we got it?
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. So now we're kind of all over the place today, I apologize. We are going to go back to our items that were pulled from this morning. Our first item, let me find it, 13. Introduction of a comprehensive nitrous oxide ordinance adding Division 11 to Title V of the county code. Is that five? V, is it five? Five. And we're going to hear from Sophia. Want to introduce your team?
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon, chair and your board. I'm Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director for Department of Health and Human Services.
I think, Super, go, do you, oh, her mic, your mic, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, there it is. There it is, okay. I'm Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director for Department of Health and Human Services.
Brianna Sherlock, Manager for the Healthy Communities in Wick Division at Public Health.
And we are here this afternoon to bring forward to your board an ordinance that would ban the sale of nitrous oxide in unincorporated Humboldt County. This is something that has been worked on for several months, specifically working very closely under the leadership of Supervisors Bushnell and Wilson in this process. And so what we'll be doing today is doing a brief overview about what nitrous oxide is for community members that may not be aware that may be tuning in right now or later, share a bit about the policy development process. And then we'll talk, obviously, about the ordinance, the components of that, and the enforcement tools that are included in the ordinance that's before your board today. So with that, can I have the clicker? And do you want to click or do you want me to give? Okay, and so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brianna to kick us off.
Great, thank you. So nitrous oxide is a colorless gas. And one thing about nitrous is that it's very hard to detect in the body. It is pretty much dissipated within 24 hours and the tests that are required to detect it are very challenging to obtain. They're not readily available. It is used in healthcare for sedation and pain relief, as well as in the culinary industry to make whipped cream. However, there's also been, or there is, sorry, a recreational illicit use of nitrous oxide to get high. And when people utilize nitrous oxide recreationally, it is usually to obtain feelings of euphoria and giddiness, sedation and numbness and confusion, and can also cause confusion and dizziness. Recreational prolonged or short-term use of recreational nitrous oxide can have both short and long-term effects. And I won't read them all because they're in the presentation, but blurred vision, sweating, tiredness, weakness are some of the common short-term effects. It can have a whole host of long-term effects, including memory loss, vitamin B12 depletion, which can lead to brain and nerve damage. It can also cause disruption to the reproductive system and lead to potential birth defects if used during pregnancy. Has a potential for psychological dependence and several other potential long-term effects. So just a quick overview of some of the common terms that you'll hear used associated with nitrous oxide. One is a canister, and there's a photo of each of these things up there. The canisters are what I think people typically think of when they think of nitrous oxide, the whippets. So small metal cartridges that contain compressed nitrous oxide. There are also crackers, which are the metal containers that crack the canisters and dispense nitrous oxide gas. And then there are tanks, which are, can range anywhere in a small size, which is what the picture is of, they're all the way up to extra-large containers. And those dispense a steady stream of nitrous oxide gas without having to use crackers or canisters. And the tanks, a large one or medium-large one is only about $20. And it comes in a lot of different flavors and is seen all throughout the county in different retailers.
So just want to touch on here a bit around the implementation timeline. So back in January of 2024, your board passed a resolution around addressing nitrous oxide and directed Public Health to come back with a policy approach. It wasn't until June of 2024 that our Substance Use Prevention Program was awarded funding to work on recreational nitrous oxide education and prevention work, which is really what gave us the staff capacity to do this policy development work and bring something forward to your board today. And this funding is through the Substance Use Block Grant, and that's federal funding that has been supporting this work since June of 20- oh, I'm realizing it says 2020, or no, it was 2024. Man, the year is going by, 2025, we're almost halfway through. So in winter, fall, winter, and now spring, our Substance Use Prevention Program staff did a landscape analysis with our community partners, the Health and Social Policy Institute. And Brianna will go into more detail around what came out of that retail landscape analysis. But that took several months to visit throughout the county, several retailers. And then also, over the last several months, there has been a coordinated effort with the city managers from the seven incorporated cities to really look at a unified approach. And that's something that Supervisors Bushnell and Wilson were really leading on that. And as Public Health, we were providing that technical assistance and that support in that process for the conversations around what a unified county-wide approach could look like for the county to pass something and for cities to potentially pass something as well. And then we are here today to introduce this ordinance, which would be adopted, I believe might be our June 3 meeting, now that I'm looking at the slides, but it would be in June that we would bring back something for adoption. And I'll turn it over to you for next.
So as Sophia mentioned, our staff were out in the field doing a retail landscape analysis from October to March or to April. They visited a total of 144 retailers throughout Humboldt County from So-Humb all the way up to the northern part and out in eastern Humboldt and of course here in Eeyore Valley and Humboldt Bay. And they visited both in unincorporated Humboldt as well as in the city jurisdictions. They did not visit any retailers on tribal land, since those are sovereign nations and that is not within our jurisdiction. So during their landscape analysis, what they discovered is that of the 144 retailers, 24 retailers had nitrous oxide located within plain sight. 18 of those retail outlets had crackers, canisters, and tanks, if you can remember back to that slide about the different kinds of products available. Five of the outlets only had crackers and canisters and one only had canisters. Staff, these were mostly undisclosed observations due to safety of staff, but they were disclosed at 34 of the 144 retail outlets. And most of those that they were disclosed at are in unincorporated Humboldt, where we have a relationship with retailers because of the work we've been doing on the tobacco retail license. So these are the different stores that the products were found at, predominantly smoke shops. Of the 24, 18 were smoke shops. The one chef store that's in the safety corridor between Arcata and Eureka, one home goods store in Ferndale, a handful of independent stores, like glass-blowing shops, and one mini-market.
So like Brianna was saying, you know, we were finding that tobacco retailers were mostly the ones that we could see in plain sight that were selling nitrous oxide. Also, you know, I think another key finding that's important for us to keep in mind that, you know, we are hearing anecdotally that there could be retailers that are selling nitrous oxide in back rooms or behind closed doors. And so this landscape analysis doesn't account for that. And so I just think that's an important thing to acknowledge, that these were, what we're sharing is what was observed in plain sight and it's possible that there are retailers that are selling it behind closed doors or by request only in a back room, for example. But we don't have any data to share, to quantify that with your board. And so just wanted to clarify that. And so with that information, like I mentioned, there's been an effort for a unified policy approach between the county and the city jurisdictions. And the thinking behind this really has been, if there's a unified approach and consistency across all the jurisdictions, there is going to be more of an impact on addressing this and not having one jurisdiction be the place where folks are able to access nitrous oxide. So what we are bringing forward to your board today is a standalone nitrous oxide ordinance. After this presentation and your board, you know, makes a decision on whether or not to proceed with introducing the ordinance, the subsequent item that we have before you that we will talk in a bit more detail on soon is around adding an amendment to our tobacco retail licensing ordinance, which would reference this nitrous oxide ordinance. And so that's, that'll be for our next board agenda item. And then also just wanted to share that we presented to tribal partners at the United Indian Health Services Board of Directors meeting just a couple of weeks ago. And that went very well. There was a lot of interest and Public Health has been invited back to do an additional presentation at one of their quarterly meetings. And so now this is, you know, getting to the meat of it, of what the ordinance covers. And so I'll just go over high-level, you know, points of this. So this would be a ban on the sale of nitrous oxide and associated paraphernalia in unincorporated Humboldt County. There's no exceptions for culinary use, for automotive. It's still permissible for use in healthcare, you know, dental pharmacy environments or if it's contained in like canned whipped cream, for example. The enforcement mechanisms are a misdemeanor. And let me pull up the language around that. So there, it would be, you know, any person violating this chapter is guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof may be punished by a term in the county jail of up to six months or by a fine of $1,000 or both. So this is pretty aligned with state law already around it being a misdemeanor to sell nitrous oxide for illicit use. However, this ban is just an outright sales ban. And so it includes this misdemeanor language. Also includes that it would be a public nuisance. And so that adds another enforcement tool for the county. And then the third enforcement tool around revocation of business license, that's also in here. And then lastly, for our next board agenda item, a revocation of your tobacco retail license. And this is, that would only be specific to tobacco retailers. So those are the different enforcement tools that give a lot of flexibility for addressing the sale of nitrous oxide, recognizing, you know, and this is something that, you know, we've been, you know, sharing with, you know, Sheriff Hansel, with Director John Ford and keeping them updated on the development of this ordinance and these different provisions. But this was something that was agreed upon between county and the city managers to, these would be the different tools. I will note one distinction that is different about our county ordinance from possibly what cities might be introducing is another enforcement tool that they have that I learned that we don't have is administrative citations. And that's something in consulting with county council that would require, that wouldn't be within public health scope to develop. That really would be a larger conversation for your board. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that's one piece, one enforcement tool that's not in here because it's not something the county currently has in county code to add as a tool here. Let's see, and so with that, again, want to thank, you know, Supervisor Bushnell, Supervisor Wilson, who unfortunately couldn't be here for this moment, for the support of this work, also the city managers. Also, a key partner for us, the Health and Social Policy Institute has also received funding to help support this work ongoing as well. So they've been a really key partner for us. And then, you know, we've had, as a part of the landscape analysis work, also conversations with some of our local police departments as well, with the sheriff's office. And so want to acknowledge, there really has been a lot of partnership in getting this to where it is here today for your board. And then I also just want to really express our appreciation for Brianna and her team in the substance use prevention and tobacco prevention work. I know some of them are right here behind us, who really worked incredibly hard for the landscape analysis in a short timeframe. And then I know we're going to talk about the TRL amendment for the next board agenda item, but I'd be remiss not to acknowledge, obviously, the role of environmental health in supporting the TRL work, which will be a key part of this as well. So with that, open to any questions or comments from your board.
Okay, thanks so much. Were you here when the kids were here this morning?
Missed it.
Well, one 12-year-old talked about nitrous. And that's, the thought was that they talk about something in the community, they're from southern Humboldt, and that they talk about things in the community that are affecting them or that they're concerned about. And he talked about nitrous oxide and the use. He has a cousin that is paralyzed. And so it's, you know, forefront in his mind and his family's. It's actually my grandson. But that was what he, and I didn't know he was going to do that. And so his grandma's passion is his passion as well. So I really want to say thank you when I came to you guys. I think it's almost two years now. Nitrous in the public world, it just really wasn't recognized or wasn't even like, you know, it's whipped cream, what are we talking about here? And so the work you guys have done in that time and the funding you've been able to get and connecting the cities and the sheriff and, you know, just all the things, tremendous amount of work, and I just can't thank you enough. And so with that, I will open up for questions from my board.
50 years ago, I remember Bob Shopping Center, he was mad as hell because two cases of whipped cream didn't have any gas left in them. And I remember it was 50 years ago because I happened to walk in the back room at 7:30 in the morning when he was throwing the cans. But somebody kept bringing them back because they had no nitrous left in them to push the whipped cream. That's 50 years ago. So it's been around and it's, you know. And I didn't see this, but I was told that this would stop Amazon and them from shipping it in because I know that comes in in droves online. So we notify them that they can't ship it to the county?
But yeah, that's our understanding is that once this is on the books, that they won't be, it won't be-
Into the zip codes.
Yeah, into the zip codes, exactly.
Okay, so we'll go out- Okay, so we'll go out, Supervisor Madron. Oh, okay, so we'll go out to public comment.
There is none, Chair.
Okay, and we'll come back to the board. And I'm going to make a motion for staff recommendations. And if I could get a second.
Second motion.
Thank you, and Supervisor Royo.
I just want to thank you for the work on this. I know this has been something, you know, that you were very committed to seeing through. And I'm grateful that there was so much motivation to work on this. And yeah, I think this is pretty innovative and hopefully we're leading the way for the region on this issue.
So my understanding is we'll be the first county that has a county ordinance like this. Is that correct?
Well, I would say, I believe the county of Orange technically is the first county that passed an ordinance. But what I would say that's really unique about the work that we're doing is that we would be, my understanding is, the first county that would be having a countywide, all jurisdictions or almost all the jurisdictions, along with the county, creating a unified approach to banning the sale of nitrous oxide. So I definitely do think there is a leading of the way around this issue.
Yeah, I have so many people, I had so many people in southern Humboldt that reached out to me, parents of young children. And, you know, currently you can be a 10-year-old and get it. And it doesn't, you know, it's not a drug, really, but it's being used that way. And when I came to you guys, I also had personal experience with one of my employees that passed away. And then Mike, Supervisor Wilson, you know, heard about it. And there was a lot of use up his way and the littering that goes on. And you see them everywhere, just thrown out now the bigger cartridges. And they're in the waterways. And I talked with the dump people, and they get them in the dumpsters. And it's just, you don't realize the problem until you start digging into it. And then there is also, you know, I spoke with Highway Patrol, and you can, you can't be under the influence of inhalant, but there's no test, really, except for a blood gas, which you can't do, which you have to do in a lab. And it wears off so quick. And so it is such a difficult thing, I think, to try to monitor and do the ordinance like we're doing. And I know you guys worked so hard on getting this and then getting the jurisdictions to come along and just be banned together like the whole county. And so I can't, and it is something I personally took on and was like, I'm getting this done. I don't care how long it takes. And I know expressed that to you, Sophia. And I just want to thank you, really. Supervisor Royo.
Thank you. Not to take away from the meaningful moment, I do have a process question about items 16 and 17. I'm sorry, did we pull them both or did we? Okay, so, and so we have to hear them separately, is my understanding? Okay, so this motion was just on 16. All right, thank you.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. And so the next item is coming also from Sophia. Is it coming from you?
Yes, and Mario.
And Mario?
Our Division of Environmental Health Director.
Okay, so this is an introduction of an ordinance amending Humboldt County Code Title VII, Chapter VII, Section 817-13, Comprehensive Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance. Sophia?
Great, thank you. To be fair, this will be a much briefer presentation. We don't have a slide deck for this one since the bulk of it really was the other presentation. So really, what we're bringing forward to your board today is an amendment to our tobacco retail licensing ordinance that would add that last enforcement tool that I mentioned in the previous board agenda item. And so really, it would just add one line to the TRL. It would state, "A tobacco retailer's license shall be revoked if the retailer violates Chapter 5 of Title V, Division 11 of the Humboldt County Code by selling or attempting to sell, offer, distribute, or otherwise provide any person nitrous oxide in violation of that chapter." So it really is just cross-referencing the nitrous oxide sales ban. And so I want to turn it over to Mario to just talk a little bit about what this amendment means in the context of like enforcement process.
Great, thanks. Mario Kelson, Director of Environmental Health under the Public Health Branch. If approved, the ordinance essentially gives clear direction to staff to watch for sales of nitrous oxide at tobacco retail facilities. So if, and it ensures that the retailer is after notice and opportunity to appeal those observations, lose their existing retail licensure if they're found in violation of this ban. The TRL program as existing right now requires annual inspections by our staff during regular business hours and responding to complaints. So if we get complaints around nitrous oxide, if the ban goes through, then we would respond to those allegations. Operators would be entitled to a notification process from our office and a chance to have an administrative review. So they would be obligated to respond within 14 days. And then a notice of determination from our office would be provided to them. And then another 14 days would give them opportunity to appeal to a hearing officer, so a different tier of appeals. And essentially, that is the process. There are a few additional remedies for other enforcement tools. You know, this doesn't limit state or federal laws from effect, affecting the applicability of oversight. The public nuisance is also underscored within the TRL in addition to the nitrous oxide proposed ordinance. Civil enforcement is also an option through the TRL. So just wanted to illustrate that. But essentially, that is it.
Thank you. I know that none of the incorporated areas have yet to sign on to the tobacco ordinance. And we did talk about this in our meeting with the city managers. And currently, you, we have a grant process that is available, right? That the tobacco retailers don't need to pay like they did prior to. And so there was some interest through the city managers to bring this ordinance to their councils. Are we working on that as well?
Yeah, the message that we got from some of the city managers was that, you know, there was this priority for, to work on the nitrous oxide bans across the board. But yeah, there has been, we have been getting questions about coming to some city councils to provide background on the TRL, the tobacco retail licensing ordinance.
It gives them a mechanism to enforce the nitrous oxide ban as well, which is, they seemed excited about that. And so hopefully, that's something we can get involved with as well with the cities.
Definitely.
Are there any questions from my board? Okay, we'll go out to public comment.
There is none.
Public comment in the room? Closing public comment, looking for a motion.
I'll move approval of the item as presented.
Thanks again, and thanks for everyone's hard work, all the folks behind you. I know nobody does this singly, so I just, our board really appreciates all the work.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you. And we are adjourned. Thank you.